Good evening and welcome to the weekly Lawrence City Commission meeting. It's really, it is a gorgeous day in Lawrence, Kansas. I mean, they don't get much better than this, so to welcome everybody this evening and hopefully we'll get to your item today. So, anyway, first item on the agenda are proclamations, and the first is a recognition of Mayor's Day of Service. Is anyone here to speak to this item? Ta-da. Come on up.
How can you hear it if we get announced?
You, you bet. Mayor's Day of Service.
Thank you so much. I'm Linda Brandon-Murder. I'm the AmeriCorps Program Manager with the United Way of Douglas County, and we have nineteen members serving across Douglas County at various host site agencies. We also have a Kansas Volunteer Commissioner here, Matthew Lindsay, from Topeka. Then we have, where'd she go? And this is Hannah, and she's with Boys and Girls Club, AmeriCorps. Then we have Kathleen Morgan from the library. They have two vistas, AmeriCorps vistas, right? And I don't know how many, do you have twenty-five?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one AmeriCorps members. So, we're all over the place, and this event right now is happening in sixty-two areas across Kansas, whether it be the city or the county. So, thank you so much for having us, and I guess you're gonna do your thing, Mayor.
Proclamation. I would like to know, do you have a, needless to say, I see that I have time to spend volunteering between now and the end of April, as everyone does. Last year, I helped build a house, which I sure hope is still standing. I was telling Commissioner Herbert I swung a hammer and I thought I'd lost my business, you know, at the end. Anyway, if you have something that you would like me to help with, I'd be happy to help and volunteer in any way that I could, and I know.
Wonderful.
I'll bring my friends, okay?
All right. Well, you don't know what you're signing up for, but we'll take ya.
Very.
Small hammer.
That's right. Well, I'm happy to read the proclamation. The proclamation, "Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. AmeriCorps members serve in thirty-six locations across the city of Lawrence and are actively addressing challenges facing our community, from fighting food and housing insecurity and running after-school programming to support health and financial literacy and training our youth for the future. National service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership training for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps members demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Services shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and joined with mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service, which was evident on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 5th, 2016. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the city of Lawrence, Kansas, does hereby recognize the work of AmeriCorps and volunteers across Lawrence throughout the month of April, and challenges each member of our community to volunteer their time to a worthwhile cause between now and the end of April. Thank you all very much for your hard work, your dedication to helping others. Believe me, we can't, we can't thank you enough, and the work that you do is really recognized in every corner of our community. So, thank you all, and if you'd like to...
And we're all recruiting right now for programs that start August 1st. So, if you have anyone who wants to serve a year in the community...
There's a whole bunch of people in here.
Bring us up.
Who gets the proclamation?
She gets that.
Who's that?
I'm here.
Where are you? Here you go. I'm all these guys.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Okay, next proclamation is to proclaim the week of April 4th through sixteenth, no, I'm sorry, yeah, 4th through 10th, as Public Health Week.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and I have Carrie Brett, our Communications Coordinator, and Dr. Vicki Colley-Akers, who's our Academic Health Department Liaison with the University of Kansas. And I want to thank you for helping us recognize Public Health Week this, this week, and we've already started. We want to give you an annual report and a cup that we gave out to all staff yesterday, because you're part of our public health team as well. And when we think about public health, we think about our annual report where it says healthier together. This work is work that we do together. We know that the problems that we're trying to address, chronic disease, you know, one in every other person in this community has a chronic disease. So, if we're gonna try to tackle a problem that fifty thousand-plus people have, we need lots of help, and you help us do that. And so, one of the ways that you help us do that is support the work of our community health program. And some examples of what you've done with us in partnership with us recently is the work around the nutrition standards for the sports pavilion, the work around smoke-free parks, the work around safe routes to school. You know, there, the list is long of things that we're trying to do together to work to improve the health of all. And I know one of the things that I saw, noticed on the shirt of one of the young ladies that was just here, talked about poverty. Poverty is a big driver of, of health. Poverty leads to stress, stress is, leads to chronic disease. If we can handle, if we can take a dent out of the stress that we live in every day, that chronic stress we have when we don't have affordable housing, when we don't have employment, when we don't have good schools or good education, or we live in a violent neighborhood, when we don't have opportunities to exercise or opportunities to have healthy food on our plates, those things lead to stress, which in the, in the end, leads to chronic disease and early death. So, you're here helping us to do that. And one of the big things that you did a few years ago, and it's time to do again, is that Community Health Plan roadmap for a healthier Douglas County. If you recall, we started that in 2012, working with the community to try to discern what were the health issues that this community cared about. At the end of that year-and-a-half-long process that engaged fifteen-hundred-plus people, our answers were poverty, access to healthy foods, access to health care, trying to access mental health and de-stigmatize the mental health, and then physical activity. And I've already listed some of the things that we've done to try to make strides in those areas, but it's time to go at that again and take another look at our community, engage all communities in this process again. So, when you look in the inside cover of our annual report, you'll see a little timeline, and at the very top of this easy eight-step process to a new community health plan, it talks about April 2016. This is the first body that we go in front of, and our ask of you is to appoint a public representative and a private representative to serve on a steering committee to help guide this work. If you recall back in 2013 with the Community Health Plan, it's one of the few documents that all cities and the, and the county have all adopted as a guiding document. So, we want to honor that, that legacy of everyone adopting and have everyone help in the creation of that second plan. So, we're asking that of you sometime here this, this month to give us those two appointments, that would be greatly appreciated. I also want, I can't not talk about the other little symbol on the front of this annual report, which is our seal. It's also on that cup. In May of 2015, we became one of the first of seventy-five state and local health departments to become accredited. There are approximately three thousand local and state health departments in the nation, and we were among the first seventy-five. And we took on that, that work, not, not to really say that we were accredited, but because if we became accredited, we believed and we knew that it would help us do this work of improving the health in Lawrence and Douglas County. Being accredited means that we have the capacity, we have the resources, to do meaningful things around policy and environmental and systems change, and these two ladies are part of a nice, great team at the Health Department, making that happen. So, thank you for helping us in proclaiming this week, Public Health Week.
And Dan, could we have your name so everybody knows who you are?
Oh, Dan Partridge, Director of the Health Department.
Thank you. I'm happy to read the proclamation. "The proclamation, 'Whereas good health and quality of life for everyone in Lawrence is an important goal for our community, and whereas the role of public health is to protect, promote, and restore the public's health, and whereas the health of our community depends on many factors, such as individual health behaviors, education, jobs, quality of health care, and the environment. And whereas the National Public Health Week provides the focused opportunity for the public to learn about our community's public health concerns and success stories. And whereas action by community leaders to implement policy changes that promote the Community Health Plan goals of healthy eating, active living, reduced poverty, improved access to health care and mental health care will make our community a healthier place to live for current and future generations. Now, therefore, I, Mike Amix, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 4th through 10th, 2016, as Public Health Week. Dan and, and everybody with the Health Department, I want to thank you for all the work that you do. It's amazing how in a, really a generation that we've seen such a change. I remember when I was a young kid, I think we recognized the Health Department was a place that we had to go get shots every year, and I, and I think that that's all they did. But today, it is so much more in trying to build, you know, a healthy community and just so many things that are provided to our excellent Health Department. We appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you all." Okay. Next proclamation is to proclaim the week of April 10th through 16th, 2016, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
First off, I want to say thank you for the recognition. I'm Randy Roberts. I'm the Director for the Communication Center. And unfortunately, these folks, even though they do an extremely good job on a daily and nightly basis, you never see them. So, at times, they feel a little behind the scenes and maybe a little unrecognized, so I appreciate your efforts tonight and, and telling them thank you. I also want to extend a thank you to all your support and continue to support the center. And once again, I've, I've got a tremendous group of folks that answer the phones anytime you call for 911 or non-emergency calls, and we have about nineteen agencies that come through our center. So, they are very overworked and very underappreciated at times, but I thank you very much for tonight.
Randy, I appreciate all the services you do on behalf of the commission. It's, it's great to know that as a citizen, anytime you make that call, that, you know, you're gonna have somebody there. One of the things that underappreciated, you know, you need to think of this, I need an address. I've had a number of people that have contacted me in the last few days since this has been on our agenda, that want to know an address that they can send a thank you card to the folks that work in the Communications Building.
111 East 11th Street, Suite 200.
Thank you. I'll make sure I pass that along also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I would have been wrong if I didn't recognize that part. So, anyway, I got the address. Anyway, thank you. "This is a proclamation, 'Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require sheriff, police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our sheriffs, police officers, and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Douglas County Emergency Communications Center. And whereas the public safety dispatchers are the first and the most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, ensuring their safety. And whereas the public safety dispatchers of Douglas County Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, I, Mike Amix, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through 16th, 2016, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and, and joins in honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Thank you all very much for your job, really well done, and, and thanks for all your commitment to our citizens."
On behalf of some of you.
Take care, tell everybody hi. Okay, next item, National Library Week will be on next week. Okay, so, we have a proclamation to proclaim the month of April 2016 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. We have folks here this evening? Please, come on up.
My name is Mary Gatewood, and I'm representing our Lawrence Parkinson Support Group. Several of our members are here with us this evening. I guess the main thing I want to emphasize tonight is that Parkinson's disease is a chronic and progressive movement disorder. It is, the symptoms continue and worsen over time, and there are one million persons in the United States with Parkinson's disease at this time, and fourteen thousand Kansans have it. Usually, the diagnosis occurs in persons ages fifty and sixty. However, there is young onset Parkinson's disease, which can occur, and a person that you might be familiar with who had young onset Parkinson's is Michael J. Fox. So, you might be familiar with him. The Lawrence Parkinson Support Group meets monthly, and we present programs, educational programs, updates on current research, socialization time, and opportunities for the Parkinson's, persons with Parkinson's to interact with each other about concerns that they have, as well as the care partners interacting with their group to get ideas and express concerns, and hopefully feel a little bit more as if they're part of a supportive system. So, we do have a hundred members here in the Lawrence and surrounding area, and I want to thank you for having us this evening.
Mary, I want to thank you and all the folks that are part of the organization and the work and, and, and help that you provide for so many families, folks that have Parkinson as, I had an uncle, not, not that many years ago, that had gone through, suffered from the disease, and, and it was, it was hard to see, I mean, it really was. This is one of those proclamations that I like to do but not like to do. So, anyway, thank you all for your commitment and the work that you do. So, I'd be happy to read the proclamation. "The proclamation, 'Whereas Parkinson's disease is a degenerative brain disorder that affects a million and a half adults in the United States, with over fourteen thousand people diagnosed with Parkinson's in the state of Kansas alone. And whereas more individuals suffer from Parkinson's disease than multiple sclerosis, laryd dystrophy, and Lou Gehrig's disease combined. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease include tremor, rigidity, slowness of movement and difficulty with balance and speech. The causes of Parkinson's disease, though not yet known, are under intense study. The neurological department of the University of Kansas Medical Center has been designated by the National Parkinson Foundation as a center of excellence in conducting ongoing research to improve treatment and discover a cure. And whereas April 11th has been proclaimed, proclaimed World Parkinson Day, a day for all to recognize the need for more research and assistance in dealing with the devastating effects of Parkinson's disease. And now, therefore, I, Mike Amix, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Parkinson Disease Awareness Month in Lawrence, and urge all citizens to extend their support for those struggling with Parkinson's disease and the loved ones trying to help fight the battle." Again, thank you all very much for helping in the, in the special ways that you all do. Thank you all. Okay, the next proclamation is to proclaim the month of April 2016 as Fair Housing Month. Do we have representatives here this evening?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I am Carl Edwards, Chair of the Human Relations Commission for the City of Lawrence, and on behalf of the Human Relations Commission, I'm here about April as Fair Housing Month in our city. April, this April is the forty-eighth anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. President Johnson signed the Civil Rights Act in 1968 that expanded upon previous acts and prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, financing of housing based on race, religion, national origin, sex, handicap, and familial status. In Lawrence, sexual orientation and gender identity have also been added to those protected classes. In Lawrence, the Human Relations Commission is tasked with endeavoring to eliminate discrimination and assisting with the enforcement of Chapter 10 of the City Code, which is Lawrence's equivalent of the federal civil rights laws. The Human Relations Commission was created in 1961 and adopted the city's first civil rights code, which took place in March of 1964. Each April, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development commemorates this occasion with Fair Housing Month and recognizes the strides made in furthering this landmark civil rights law. For the second year, the Human Relations Commission, in partnership with the Lawrence-Douglas County Housing Authority and USD 497, has sponsored a poster contest to promote Fair Housing Month. The, we, the, the children have prepared posters, they're on display currently at the library, the public library, and they'll be there until April 21st, and then you'll get a chance to meet them at your April 26th meeting. So, I want to thank you for, for your support.
Thanks for bringing the Fair Housing Month forward, giving us the opportunity to sit and realize, you know, the importance of making, housing, what a, what a simple deal.
Right.
What a simple deal. And, you know, we all kind of, this part of the week, probably just takes it for granted. So, to, to stop and, and in a month, recognize the importance of, you know, we can't do this stuff. You've got to have housing. People got to have a place to live, and they've got to do it without the worry of all the things that go along with it. So, I'm very happy to read this proclamation and make this proclamation. Thank you all for your work. One of your predecessors, I had great opportunity in, in working with Reverend Paul Wynn from, from our staff, and, and we just lost Reverend Wynn recently, but, but he taught me more about fair housing. He and Rahelio Samuel, and, and just taking, just learning from those two men was, was a great opportunity for me. So, anyway, sorry to take that time, but I have to make that note. "It's a proclamation, 'Whereas April 2016 marks the forty-eighth anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which provides in Lawrence equal opportunity for all Americans in the sale, rental, and financing of housing and prohibits discrimination based on, basis of race, age, marital status, disability, familial status, color, religion, sex, or national origin, sexual orientation, and general, gender identity. And whereas the city of Lawrence supports efforts to eliminate discrimination in housing by working to educate all its residents on fair housing rights and responsibilities, and through enforcement of fair housing laws, including Chapter 10 of the Code of the City of Lawrence. And whereas the month of April is officially set aside as Fair Housing Month throughout this nation. Now, therefore, I, Mike Amix, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, in conjunction with the annual national commemoration, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 to be Fair Housing Month in Lawrence, and to ask the people of Lawrence to join me in reaffirming our obligation to fair and equal housing for every person who resides or wishes to reside in our city. Thank you very much, and keep up all the great work." Okay, we are on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are to be considered under one motion, will be enacted by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any, oh, let's see, there was a, some item, or one item?
Item seven has been deferred.
Right. Item number seven, which is the industrial revenue bonds for 800 New Hampshire Street have been deferred indefinitely, we'll bring those back at a later date advertised, okay? So, are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to have removed?
Item fifteen.
Fifteen?
I need to recruit myself.
Okay. I better take notes, I get lost on this, I guess. Leslie, did you have one?
It was seven.
Right, okay. Are there any other items that a member of the commission would like to have removed? Okay. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for separate consideration? Any item? Okay. So, back to the commission then. We need to add claims to the consent agenda, to two-hundred-and-seventy-seven vendors in the amount of one million, three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and twenty-four cents, and that is the total claims for this report. So, record that as being the claims. So, with the exception of item fifteen, we don't have to take a, a separate action on number seven, because it's already done, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, with the exception of item fifteen and the addition of claims, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Sound move.
Motion made in second to approve the consent agenda with claims, and with the exception of item number fifteen, was made by Vice Mayor Soden, second by Commissioner Larson. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes five-zero. Item number fifteen is to approve as signs of community interest, a request from the Douglas County Master Gardeners to place signs throughout the city to promote their spring garden fair on April 9th, 2016. The signs would be placed on Wednesday, April 6th, and removed Sunday, April 10th, of 2016. I guess you did recruit yourself, okay. Okay, is, are there any questions from the commission?
Uh-uh.
Any public... Any public comment on this item? Okay, so back to the commission, I would entertain a motion to approve as signs of community interest for the Douglas County Master Gardeners.
So move it.
Second. Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes 4-0 with one abstention.
It's a pretty political divisive move there.
That was.
Well, since I wrote the letter.
Oh, okay, now it comes out, there we go.
Don't want to anger that crowd.
That's right. The next item on the agenda is general public comment, and the public is allowed to speak on any of the items or issues that are not scheduled on the agenda after first being recognized by the mayor. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate those items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer those items to staff for follow-up. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in and state their name and address, and speakers should address all comments and questions to the commission. Is there any general public comment this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Ted Boyle, President of Lawrence Improvement Association. And this is of general interest. In our hometown in the Journal World this morning, I'm going to read you this article from the Lawrence Daily Journal World from April 5, 1916. The first community meeting ever held in North Lawrence was held last evening, and it may mark an era in the development to take part in this town. 350 persons gathered, cheered enthusiastically as speakers declared that time has come for the North Lawrence side to get an even footing with civic development that prevails on the south side of the river. And the speakers were pastors of various churches in North Lawrence and residents of North Lawrence. So I'd just like to tell you, this is our 100th anniversary of what North Lawrence Improvement Association does, that these 350 people thought was concern of the residents of North Lawrence, and we take it as a very serious matter, and we will continue to do that. And I have to say that probably in the last 20 years, there's been more done in North Lawrence there than there was in the past 80 years. I grew up in North Lawrence, so that makes, you know, I've lived there for a pretty long time. I saw what happened after the flood, and North Lawrence got hand-me-down infrastructure from the south side of town. And, you know, we've been kind of a redheaded stepchild of Lawrence ever since Jefferson agreed to be part of Lawrence, Kansas. So I'd just like to let you know that we're going to keep after you. So thank you very much.
You know, Ted, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I won't bring up RS5, I'm sure that that's what people were asking for, but anyway. I'll just bring that up a little bit as a comment.
Well, you know, I could comment.
Here, time out, time out. Here's the deal, so neither one of us get in trouble. Speaking on behalf of this commission.
Been there, done that.
You know, North Lawrence is such a special place for all of us, as each and every spot in this community is. But, you know, I think, you know, for myself, and I know other members of the commission, you know, I grew up a little bit of my life there until Dad decided that, you know, he needed to get us out of the country, or, you know, we were going to be in trouble, so moved us out south. But, no, it was, it's always, it's truly been a special place for so many people, you know, in our community to be able to call home. So, you know, we're extremely proud of North Lawrence as, you know, a part of our community and the hard work that people provide, you know. Coming from North Lawrence, it's got the greatest gardens in the world.
Greatest soil in the world, and the deal is, the three big things that I can note that we've got in North Lawrence, number one was the depot, you know, we'll be celebrating our 20-year anniversary, June 4, and same day is the Sand Rad reunion. And also, the intersection of Second Locust. You know, the city and the North Lawrence Improvement Association wrote a letter stimulus, got stimulus money to redo that, so it really didn't cost the taxpayers of Lawrence directly money, even though it was government money. And the third thing is, and the most valuable thing, is that $7 million pump that is being installed right now that affects two-thirds of North Lawrence on the north side of the tracks, which will stop stormwater flooding on that side of the tracks. And hopefully, it's going to be done by the end of June, 1st of July, so we'll keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted, you bet, thank you. Any other public comment, general public comment of a general nature? Thank you all. Okay, on to the regular agenda. I would ask anyone who has brought their cellphone with them, they might want to silence it at this time so that we can make sure that everybody has the opportunities to speak at the podium without being bothered by a phone. The public is allowed to speak on any of the regular agenda items or to give public comment after first being recognized by the mayor. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in and state their name and address. And again, speakers should address all comments and questions to the commission. So the first item on the irregular agenda is to consider the following items regarding the here project. We have to disclose any ex parte communications that we've had. Lisa.
I had a meeting with Steve and Duane, spoke with Jane Eldridge for a bit, project. I think that's it, some emails, I think everybody got the emails.
I spoke with Candy Davis, Larry McElwain, and I got an email from Jerry Harper.
And I can't remember, I got to believe I got a packet of information, I think, can't remember the exact date, but came from Jane Eldridge, it may have even come before the last meeting, but it's come since. I was before, I haven't gotten anything else, other than what we've all gotten.
I've had emails and phone conversations with folks, Ellen Johnson, Marcy Francisco, Janet Gussner, Candy Davis, Virgil Dean, I got this email from Jerry Harper. That's pretty much all information that's in the record. I had a brief conversation with Jim Lutchinger, the developer, before our meeting here, and the question I had was, of the leases that, you know, they've got, how many of them have parking associated with it? And his, my understanding of his answer was 90% of the leases have expressed interest in value parking. I'd let him get more information on that.
Same email as all of you received, I had a conversation with Melinda Henderson, and spoke to Jim prior to the meeting alongside Stuart, and had a cup of coffee with Commissioner Carter this afternoon.
I guess, and I don't, I suppose as counts, I talked to our staff yesterday in the agenda meeting, questions that were brought up.
Can we disclose that when we talk to staff? It's just the public, right?
Right. Okay. Scott?
Mayor, Commissioner Scott McCullough, planning office. I'll attempt to be brief tonight. You have tasked the applicant with several items to address, and so I'll highlight the packet of information you have this evening before you. The applicant has submitted revised plans to you for your consideration of revising the final development plan for this mixed-use project at 11th and Indiana Street. Essentially, it maintains 510 valet spaces in the garage with an internal ramp and revised internal circulation that negates the need to use Mississippi Street as circulation for the garage. That's accomplished with this internal ramp and moving the access aisle to the rear of these spaces from over here, coming off of Mississippi Street, to this location here. And so that way, the access to this, to these areas are in front of the staging area, and so they can turn and go here, or turn and go to the upstairs deck of the parking structure, not having to utilize the surrounding street network. It does maintain 108 on-street metered spaces. The applicant, to capture really as much residential units as possible, has revised the mix of commercial use closer to what was originally approved. What that does is free up some of the commercial spaces on the street to count toward residential spaces. They did that by removing a full restaurant accommodation and go back to a mix of retail and restaurant use. This plan before you this evening yields all of the commercial space to be occupiable, eligible for occupancy, and 548 of the 624 bedrooms, or about 88% of the residential part of the structure. This equates into 31 units of the units that would be withheld occupancy if approved. Additional items proposed by the applicant is an annual donation to the city of $100,000. And the applicant heard your request for parking diagrams reflecting close-to-code-compliant design within the garage, and so we asked for two layouts. One that was as close as possible to meeting the code, it's deficient in a couple of the one-way aisles, and that we couldn't get two-way aisles in all of the lanes, and one that actually was direction to reduce it to 22-feet aisles, thinking that that might be reasonable variance to the parking code, given that the garage exists here today. That's as much detail as I wanted to provide on the proposal, unless you have any questions about that. I do want to note that we are recommending approval with conditions, and let me highlight one of those conditions in a discussion with Vice Mayor Soden. It's discussion, it's condition number four here. Essentially, what the conditions do is formalize this plan into the development plan to give it the weight of enforcement as a zoning matter. Condition number four called for monthly reports for a year, for the first year, reflecting the use of the valet parking system. We would like to change that to strike the first clause of the sentence, and note that the owner-operator shall provide a quarterly report to the city for the life of the project that reflects the use, so on and so forth. So essentially changing it from monthly for a year to quarterly in perpetuity for that. And then we did provide some information on the metered parking, and the schedule, and some assumptions about revenue that we can talk about tonight, but I will summarize and end with our recommendations, which are threefold for this item, which is to approve the final development plan with the conditions, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement that's been prepared by the city attorney's office, meant to reflect your direction on the matter, and setting the parking meter fee and fine schedule, and directing staff to submit an adopting ordinance for future consideration. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
And to move on to some of the events that have happened in the last year, I have to ask this question. On the quarterly report, what is our or else?
Well, as a condition of the development plan, if it's not provided to us, it becomes a zoning enforcement matter.
Okay.
So we would take our lawful means to enforce.
Which would look like what?
Well, which would start with a contact with the applicant to say, you're devoid of meeting this condition, can you please submit it? And then if that's not effective, then we would work with the city attorney's office to bring an action in district court.
Other questions? Lisa, you have something?
No, that's not, yeah, no, that's not the, not the answers, I'm sorry. Essentially, we're talking about the NRA being, happen to be 100% compliance in order to get the NRA.
Yes.
Is that correct? So if they're out of compliance just for part of the year, do, is there any reduction in the NRA, or is it just that they need to be in compliance at a certain time of year?
So the framework, the approach we've taken is that to convince the NRA, they have to have a completed project, meaning that all of the parking is available and it's occupiable, if that's the question. So if any of the parking goes away, then I think that would become a question for a number of things. One is another zoning item, right? So it would be out of compliance with the zoning, and so we would be talking to them about reducing their occupancy at that time, and I think it may bring in the question of the NRA compliance.
Okay. So they can be out of compliance just for part of the year, but...
Well, they should never be out of compliance with the number of spaces afforded the project, and it's not linked to occupancy per se, it's linked to having a completed project, physically complete, and having all of the parking to make the building occupiable.
Okay.
And so I think what we're trying to provide here is that the NRA doesn't start until all of the parking to open up, the remaining bedrooms is provided, physically approved and provided on the ground, they don't get their rebates until that happens. And then that should be, that should be provided in perpetuity.
Okay, and then I'm looking at the agreement, number eight, where they have the affordable housing, why does it start on July 1? Is there a reason versus yearly, physically yearly?
Yeah, it's yearly, starting on July 1, I think, to allow that first year to get it started and get some revenues generated.
Okay.
It could start anytime, it really was just, in fact, we talked about January 1, but we thought July 1 was a reasonable date.
Okay. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Scott?
The $100,000, I just want to verify that that can go into the parking fund, and, because my intent in getting the money from the meters was for parking, because we're going to be enforcing it. So I want to make sure that that will be able to go into the parking fund, because that was really my intent for it.
That's a policy question that the commission needs to consider, it's, once donated, it's yours to direct as you choose.
I think the contract stated that it was to the discretion as to what fund it would go into, it was left to the discretion of the commission. It initially designates the housing trust fund, but then it goes on to say, or whatever, and this is just, trying to recall what it says, whatever fund the commission determines earlier.
Yeah, I just want to clarify my intent, yeah. Because that's what bothered me, is we were enforcing but not getting the fees, which shouldn't be.
The language is here, or to some other similar fund that the city's choosing.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Jim, you're here. Come on, Dan.
Why don't you sign in? Want me to sign?
Please, yeah.
I thought you knew I was. Better sign in properly. Good evening, everybody. We're back again.
If we could have your names, everybody.
James Lutchinger with here at KU, I'm one of the partners in the development, I think everybody's aware of the project. You know, first, I want to just apologize that this has become such a big issue. I think the matter before us has probably been, become somewhat overcomplicated, and we're certainly part of that situation. But simply put, what we're really doing is changing the way that we are parking cars in a fully-approved development plan. When we presented to this commission in January, along with making a change in vehicular system, the delivery system for cars, we would use, that we would use, we were also looking to change our approved and permitted plan to allow a second point of vehicular access on 11th Street. A street which is currently in disrepair, and it should be noted that here at KU is contributing in excess of $400,000 to the city to help repair that street. This was a cost-sharing agreement that actually came up after we had all of our full approvals, but we worked with the city to do what we felt was right. As I stand here tonight, the site plan relief is no longer part of this discussion. Commissioner Herbert raised a concern surrounding the risk associated with the use of 11th Street, and we were clearly reminded that during our original approval process, we had raised the same issue. Like many items that have been brought to us by this body, we did respond with a solution as shown on the plan you saw earlier this evening. Not only did we create an internal ramp that will eliminate the use of 11th Street, but we also reworked the circulation pattern of the interior of the garage, which removed the need to drive cars back onto Mississippi in order to park them properly. This resolved yet another potential traffic and safety concern raised by this commission. So where are we now? Ms. Eldridge, an attorney hired by... Ms. Eldridge, an attorney hired by somebody, has gone to great lengths to present your code publicly at every meeting that I've seen. I am confused as to her agenda, but that's not relevant. But I do believe that the commissioners, and I'm quite certain that the staff, as well as ourselves, are where, are very well aware of the code. The flaw in the presentation is that she fails to explain that when this project previously received its unanimous, unanimous approval from this commission, it never provided for cars to be parked per code. This might have been an oversight, it might have been a mistake, but that's what the approval was. If there was an opportunity or a time to contest that parking solution, that was the time to do so. Yes, we are now suggesting a different car delivery system, we understand that. We now have a traditional valet parking system, is not robotic. The result, however, is the same. Nobody will park their own car, which is why our parking solution works without adhering to the letter of the code. Nobody will be driving through this facility other than professionally trained drivers. All of the risks we raised with a self-park garage of this size are still eliminated with our valet system. The only difference is that it will cost us much more to operate. I think everybody already understands that, which is why everybody wants to make sure that we continue to operate it, and we will. This is also a reason why you haven't seen, and I doubt you will see, many other proposals seeking a valet solution. It's very expensive. A benefit of the valet program, however, is that it will create between 16 and 24 additional full-time jobs for Lawrence. The big question raised by this commission early on, will this new proposal for a parking solution work? We have now clearly demonstrated that it will. We have brought in a number of experts, people that run garages all over the country, garages bigger, garages smaller, garages tighter, and they have, they have shown without, without any hesitation that they work. Ironically, when this building was approved and permitted with a robotic system, that was arguably a leap of faith. I wish you would have pointed out to us our flaws. Conventional valet parking is a sound and proven solution. We have engaged the most experienced and largest valet parking company in the country to manage our garage, but this is hardly a proprietary service. We run absolutely no operational risk with a conventional valet parking system. There are countless number of companies locally and nationally that can flawly, flawlessly handle this operation. Does our garage meet the code for self-parking? No. Did our original approval meet the code for self-parking? No, it did not. At the mayor's request, we have now provided a drawing that demonstrates that this garage could provide some parking while getting very close to meeting the underlying self-parking code, but it just does not work with our development, and it never did. I have heard many say that this commission should not solve here at KU's problem. I could not agree more, and we don't expect you to do so. We are not asking for additional incentives in order to compensate for a conventional cost associated with a conventional valet garage. We are not asking you to reduce the parking requirement so that we can occupy 100% of our building day one. We are not asking this body to help find the additional spaces that we need to meet the 100% requirement, which we will do. Yes, we did originally ask to modify our site plan, which was a change from the original approval, but we're no longer doing that. This building looks and acts exactly the same as that was, was originally approved. The question has been asked, are we charging for parking? Yes, we are. Our original plan clearly states, our original, and it was approved, that we would be charging for parking. Our current leasing activity has shown clearly that there is no resistance to those renting in this building paying for parking. They want the safety and security that comes with a fully staffed and secured building, and they're willing to pay for it. The parking meter agreement was previously vetted in, in the, in the last go-around and approved, and was part of our approvals, but during this current process, it's become a polarizing issue. Vice Mayor Soden was particularly upset with this agreement. In response, we agreed to donate $100,000 annually of the parking meter revenue that we collect. We had previously suggested the Affordable Housing or the Low Income Housing Trust. This is, this money is to be used at your discretion. We're hopeful that the fines associated with people that don't pay the parking meters will offset the cost of monitoring them, but we, we, we would, we would expect you to do, to do as you see fit with those dollars. So what's interesting is that in stark contrast to the, to the suggestion that we are asking for assistance from you, we are actually, we are willing to give back. And once again, these dollars are to be used at your discretion, and this is in perpetuity. So it's not, it's $100,000 annually. We don't know if we're going to collect $50,000 on these parking meters or $150,000. If they're not heavily enforced, people aren't going to pay. And, you know, people take their chances anyways, and so you don't always get paid. But we've committed to doing this, we've committed to building these parking spaces, we've committed to striping them, we've committed to cleaning them and maintaining them, and we will do so. We have taken complete responsibility to meet this parking requirement. While we cannot provide as much parking in this current scheme as originally approved, under the robotic scheme, we are finalizing an agreement to provide the balance of these spaces, and I wish I could announce it tonight, but we're days away from finishing it, and it is, it is going to happen. It is, not only is it critical to us because of the incentives, it is critical to us to have this in place so that we can finalize our project. And, but it is clearly understood that, and we, that we will not be allowed to occupy all of our units until this additional parking is completed. Our current proposal does include the activation of the commercial space, the commercial space at initial occupancy. We are building what has been previously approved, what was permitted, and what is now almost complete. The structure was built on previous approvals, not based on the city's current parking code. I have heard commissioners state that this is a real mess. I would respectfully disagree. But for our effort to find a solution, it could have been a real mess. In the absence of a reliable automated parking system, we, we did switch to a conventional system. The project will not look or operate any differently than it did with robotic parking. The neighbors, the city, and the county are getting absolutely everything that they expected when this project and the association, the associated RNA were approved. We are near completion of a Class A building that will be a tremendous source of tax revenue for the foreseeable future. I stand, I stand before you tonight, asking that we move this process forward so that we can deliver what we have promised. Thank you very much.
Questions?
Well, you were, the additional parking, I know you can't speak to it.
Yes.
But if it stays away, will the additional parking be done by August 1st?
We would be prepared to do it by August 1st. It would, it is something that I do, I do believe would need to come back in front of this commission. It can be done very quickly once we have all the approvals. And it is within a distance that meets the...
From a construction standpoint, if we can expedite the approval process on this additional parking solution, can, from a construction standpoint, can you have parkable cars August 1st for your entire facility?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Other questions?
I'd like to restate my question about the leases that are being signed now.
Yes.
With regard to whether or not parking is associated with those leases.
The parking lease is a separate lease. At this point in time, of the leases that are signed, which are about 350 current leases, over 90% have expressed an interest in leasing a parking space when the time comes.
350 is your current number of leases that you have ready for August 1st?
That is correct.
Okay.
So the leases that you have, the 350, you said 90% expressed interest, does that mean they haven't signed yet?
We have not, we have actually not signed a parking lease as of yet. Everyone, we, we have them signed, and I can ask our operations people to speak to exactly what we're doing, but we asked them if they plan on renting a parking space when they lease. And typically, we, we do this at all, in all, in all of our properties, typically if they've expressed an interest to bring it, 90% of those actually do bring it. What we do find over time is that some of them will not continue to bring it back because of the location of so many of our, of our properties. Once they're in the building, they realize they don't really need their car here. But as you know, there is, there is strong parking demand in, in Lawrence, Kansas.
Anything else?
Thank you for the $100,000, which I'm hoping will go into the parking fund to recoup our fees to enforce and all of that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I do have one more. Under the plan that you presented that I had asked for, the total number of parking spaces that you could get under our code was 243, is that correct?
I actually don't know the exact number, Scott.
243, okay. And you have looked at that, Scott, and you think that that's pretty close?
Yeah, we think that that parking layout with 243 is, is reasonable for a self-park system. It's not, it's not, it would still need variances for some of the aisle width and one-way stuff. It's not the most efficient design, given the columns that are in the way, but...
Jim, as somebody that voted for your robotic parking system before...
Yes, sir.
Didn't vote for the public incentives, but voted for the parking. Did you guys have like a surety bond on that or anything? I got to ask that question. I mean, is, does that help a lot of money for...
More, more than you can imagine. We, we signed up with, with Boomerang, they, they had, their technology was outstanding. They made, they said all the right things, they did all the right things, they, we, we looked at their financials. I'm not sure that they were accurate now in looking back, but we didn't start, you know, we didn't dig into their financials as we might, but we, we take people at their word, they gave us financials, and, and we felt they were real. We went ahead and gave them a 50% deposit on our Champagne property, which was over a million and a half dollars. They delivered the actual equipment, they installed the equipment, they never finished the software, and while we thought we were actually going to be ready to go the day before they opened, we got the letter from them, and not, not a phone call, no communication, a letter saying, "Sorry, not going to be able to open your garage." We felt that that was probably a ploy to get more money out of us. Would have been very happy to pay them more money at that time. Unfortunately, the, their situation was much more dire. In the meantime, because they had performed on Champagne and they had delivered the equipment, such, the timing was such that we moved forward with this project. We felt that, I mean, they delivered a lot of very substantial equipment, and they were, now we thought more than ever that they were for real. We wrote a very similar percentage deposit, it was actually a bigger number because it's a bigger garage, and that letter that they sent that evening didn't address KU at the time, which is why they thought we were, while we thought maybe they were making a play for more money for that existing garage, over the next couple of months, it became apparent that they were not going to deliver. And then they ultimately filed bankruptcy, and have recently, I believe, filed, not only, they have gone to seven. We have spoken, as I think you know, we've talked about, not ex parte, but we've discussed, we have spoken to every garage operator, robotic garage parking operator that exists. If I hadn't spoken to them before, I certainly spoke to them since the last article came out. Not one of them can point to a garage that they've built in this country. They have built them overseas, they've built them in Asia, not one in this country that has, has moved more than 30 cars. So while this was a very expensive lesson for us, it's certainly taken a tremendous amount of your time and staff's time, we're probably fortunate that we didn't end up as we did in Champagne, where we have a, a garage full of equipment that's inoperational. The only good news in Champagne is that, as opposed to this university in this town, the kids don't bring their cars there. So we caught a break. But we're fully aware of the car, of the automobile demand here, and we're actually rather thankful that we learned this lesson in Champagne and not here, so that we know we can park cars day one.
And how much was the actual cost of the robotic system here?
I believe it was $4.3 million, just for the actual equipment.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment on this item? Any public comment? Oh, really? Okay. Back to the commissioners.
I think somebody's speaking, I think we're just taking our time.
Okay.
Mayor and Commissioners, Marcy Francisco, 1101 Ohio. I appreciate the comments and the additional information that has been presented, and I do ask that you work as much as you can within our processes, so everyone feels that this is done fairly. The other thing that I want to comment specifically about is just how this might affect the neighborhood, and to ask you not to make a decision this evening, but to actually consider the option of permit parking in the Orion neighborhood for those areas outside of this high-density, mixed-use development that are lower density. For a number of years, we talked about that, we were pretty close in the mid-'90s, we feel like there are some proposals to make the system workable, perhaps having a permit parking system that only work, requires you to have a permit between 10 and 2, Monday through Friday, so not a lot of extra time for monitoring, monitoring, monitoring that system, but that it would create the understanding that if you brought a car here, that there were specific areas. And we ask this because this is not, like many other neighborhoods, where properties were built with enough parking. Many of the properties in the Orion neighborhood were developed before we had parking requirements. The block that I live on does not have an alley. I did come and ask the city commission not to vacate that property, I think this was back in the '70s, and they went ahead and did it. So we could not build an alley if we wanted to behind that property. So those structures only have street parking. So there is this situation that happens, is if it's either not as convenient, or if you're not a resident, you're a guest, you may be looking for space on the streets, and I think that idea of bringing up permit parking should be part of this overall discussion of how are we going to make all the projects that we approve work for the city, the university, and the neighborhood. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Some of your neighbors have permit parking?
One neighbor has permit parking.
Okay.
And then actually, there's a small stretch of permit parking on Edge Hill Drive, and then the other on the...
On Ohio.
11, yeah, 1100 Block of Ohio. I do live next door to a very good cellist, and it's one thing to bring your groceries up all those stairs from wherever you found a parking space, quite another to bring a cello, so, or a harp. So, yes, and we particularly appreciate the commission working with those neighbors on that proposal. This would be a little different because it would still, it, it probably wouldn't establish specific places for each structure, but just an area for residents. I know it's off-topic in some ways, but it's also very important, especially as we change. Don't know what the timing between valet parking and robotic parking is, if there's a longer wait, if there is, again, a little more incentive to find another quicker space. So...
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
The good senator established it's a pretty good timeline in that she spoke for five minutes, so that'll be kind of what I'm going to watch for, okay? Mrs. Eldridge.
I think I could help expedite that by just handing out a letter that I was writing on.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Jane Eldridge and I'm here this evening representing Steve Schwada. And I am, I've been here before to talk about this very issue. The first time I appeared, I came having talked to a couple of the commissioners about the development code and they asked if I would please come to the meeting and bring sections of the code, and I did that. And since then, I have followed up with a letter on behalf of the Schwadas and I apologize for neglecting to indicate that to anyone who was worried. The motive for all of my interest and of Steve's interest has been one of fair development code, fair development practices, and that all of our local and out-of-town developers get treated the same way. And we believe that's part of good government. Our development code really does two things that are important. It tells us what kinds of issues, what kinds of uses we want, in which portions of town. It tells us what the processes are for obtaining those. I appreciate the Senator's comments about following process. That's really all we're asking you to do tonight. I did review all of the robotic improvements that were requested initially. I didn't find any disclosure about fees, but it was all approved. And in Lawrence, we're very used to when we say somebody has to provide parking, we understand that to mean onsite without a fee as part of the use of the building. So this is a new concept in Lawrence. At that time, we were told, however, that robotic parking was mainstay in New York and Los Angeles and that we would be the first in the state to have such a thing. We're asking tonight that you again, we're asking you again to please approve development processes that we have in the code. I understand that they are in an awful bind and I'm very sympathetic to that, as are my clients. However, the knowledge that the robotic parking wasn't going to happen came to them in October. They came to you in January. You raised some questions, asked for information, some of which you got. They were very kind and I think candid, saying to you on March 22nd, "We weren't ready in January. Now we are ready and yet we still have changing plans." We still don't have any kind of valet parking in our code. We ought to have that in our code. Our parking section applies to all of our zoning categories. Our parking section is very clear and precise about what's permitted. If it needs amending, you can initiate that amendment at any time. You could initiate that tonight. We would urge you to consider doing that. In the meantime, we think that it's important that we have full compliance with the code, that we don't have apartments that don't have code-compliant parking, that parking not be at any additional fee. We want to encourage the students who are living there to use that parking. We don't want it to be an extra cost. We don't want it to be so cumbersome or time-consuming. I know the staff report said, "Well, this is basically just like the Oriad Hotel." It's entirely different because the uses are entirely different. These kids are not transient guests. They aren't coming for a dinner. There is valet parking there and those spaces are mostly nine foot or wider. Their code was, their development plan was also approved for eight feet and I don't know how that happened. It doesn't meet the code, but I'm not here to argue about that because their parking does not seem to have been a problem, except when they have conferences. Their big things seem to often have buses and be associated with KU and so there are other kinds of parking things available. I'm disappointed that my motives or agenda were questioned. I think good government is something all of us should be aware of and should question if it seems to be appropriate. We believe that they have been the recipients of a great deal of cooperation and effort on the part of all of our jurisdictions. The NRA is estimated to have saved them approximately $9 million. The IRBs are estimated to have saved them approximately $2.5 million. And the additional spaces that had been in public right-of-way, going from 38 to 108 meters that they get the revenue from, plus their contribution, which I think is great, is all stuff that we've contributed to, that we have been part of and that we, as a city, I think, are looking forward to this development, want to encourage it, but want to encourage it according to our code so that we will know what to abide by in the future. Thank you very much. The rest of it's in the letter. Thanks.
Any questions, Jane? Thank you. Other public comment?
Thanks. Evening, Commissioners. I'm Brad Finkeldie. I want to talk about a couple of things. First, I want to mention something Senator Francisco mentioned. I was on the Planning Commission when we did the Oriad Neighborhood Plan. We spent a lot of time at that time talking about whether or not we should have a parking permit process. So we have lots of good research. The staff went and researched different communities and how they used it. And I, for one, at the time, was in favor of that. It did not end up in the final part of that plan, but I would encourage you to look at that. I would encourage you to, we know we have that information from, I don't know how many years ago that was now, maybe five years ago, but we had a lot of information on that and I, for one, support that for the Oriad area. Second, I'd like to come here tonight to say I disagree with what Ms. Eldridge just told you. I would agree with her if she would have been here in July of 2014, asking you to approve a project that was fully compliant with the parking code. That's not the question you're in front of, that you have to consider tonight. Back in July of 2014, as you know, the City Commission approved the development plan, the preliminary development plan, and there is the parking that was approved on the second floor and there is the parking approved on the first floor. No aisles, no width that met code, but a parking approval in the preliminary development plan that was approved to have that robotic parking. And that was the approved plan that went forward. At that time, you also told that there was going to be additional fees for that parking within the leases. All of that is in the approved preliminary development plan. Thus, although there was a lot of discussion about parking, both of the Planning Commission and the City Commission, this is what was approved. And that's what the preliminary development plan was and it did not comply with the code, as pointed out by the applicant. It doesn't have aisles, it doesn't have the proper width, but it was a plan that was approved by both the Planning Commission and the City Commission. And then thereafter, you approved a final development plan. And the final development plan looked, well, it looked just like this. The final development plan had both of these in there. And that was approved on May 26, 2015. It came through on the consent agenda and then it was approved by staff. Staff approved that development plan. That final development plan was then filed with the registered deeds. A building permit was pulled and a building permit, and the building was built based upon these plans. So obviously, you all know that the automated system fell through, but the final development plan and the only thing being asked to be changed here is an operational function, not a building function. They did at one point ask you to change the design of the plan and they withdrew that at Commissioner Herbert's suggestion. So all that, the only change in front of you now is operational. And so as, and I'm really here to support Scott and I believe the city attorney's analysis that was in the March 29, 2016 memo, that you have an approved final development plan. This is not a major change as defined in the code. Again, you want to talk about code compliance, follow the code as it relates to major change and your staff's interpretation of this. It's simply a change made to an operational portion. As pointed out in that memo, the planning director's position has been that he probably could have approved this himself under the code and that if he's told you in his memo, if it was up to him, he would have approved this. But he's brought it to you. It's a big decision and I respect that. But if you're following the code, the code in the approved final development plan should be approved. And this is all based upon, and I agree with the staff again, that there was, quote, "There is no change in concept regarding the warehousing of automobiles because valets will be accessing the warehouse and the driving of automobiles in and out of the storage area, much as they would have done in the automated system." So what's the change from here, the approved preliminary plan, to the one that has a valet system? Well, instead of four-deep across, you have an aisle. Now you have an aisle that they can move cars back and forth with and the valets can move the cars back and forth with, trained valets that know what they're doing. And so, yes, it has less parking spaces because you went and we added an aisle that wasn't in that plan. We've added an aisle, but now you have a plan that works. So I agree with staff. I agree with, I believe, the city attorney and their analysis of this, that you have a final development plan that has been approved. The code talks about how you can change that, the rights of the developer and the applicant, and that's what we have here tonight. Ms. Eldridge talks about being consistent and predictable. Agree with that 100%. And here, that's what the applicant is asking for. They've built a building, $50, $60 million building based upon the approved final development plan and the building permit issued by the city and they're asking for a change in the operational plan and they want a consistent and predictable result so they can open this facility. And so I urge you to approve the plans before you tonight.
Questions, Brad?
Jane said who she was representing. Are you representing anybody?
I will disclose that I have represented here in the past. I did some real estate work. I did the Miss Bell, anyone remember that? The Miss Bell real estate contracts and I've done some real estate work for that. I'm not hired and paid for to be here tonight on this matter.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Candace Davis and I'm here. I live in the Oriad neighborhood at 947 Louisiana Street. I am representing the Oriad Residents Association on behalf of Kyle Thompson, who is the chair. He's had a death in the family. I'm also representing the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods, who has been aware of this project and followed it. I wanted to let you know, I've talked about this before. I've lived in the Oriad neighborhood for 18 years and for many of those years, we have fought as a neighborhood to have reasonable parking standards in order to prove the stability and the livability of this neighborhood. And in some respects, I think a lot of our frustration comes from somehow a thought that this is a disposable neighborhood because there are a lot of rental properties and we would like to think otherwise. We'd like to see it improved. So, and I want to also say that in the last two years, I've noticed there are no parking spaces by my house during the week. So I'm at 10th and Louisiana. I have a small business. I cannot have one person be able to park within a block, two blocks of my house many times. And in fact, someone came to my house today from Channel 6 News and she had to park two blocks away to get to the house. There is no parking, really, and only 25 spaces on each street. Very limited. There's only one side of the street parking. Oriad was very disappointed in the Here project, especially in terms of the parking accommodations and in particular when they were requesting 100 spaces to be reduced early on in that process. The Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods was very disappointed in the revitalization benefits that were given to this project and felt like those benefits could have been put to a better use. I would also like to point out that this comes up quite often, but perhaps this whole project could have been assisted and helped, both the city and the developers, if they had consulted with neighbors and in the neighborhood who really had a good understanding of the difficulties and problems that existed. So in moving forward, the suggestions I would like to leave with you is, yes, I believe we need to respect our code as it exists. I would love to hear the word "no" to a lot of projects that come forward that don't meet our code. There's nothing wrong with waiting for an appropriate project. So no, if it doesn't fit the code, then it shouldn't be allowed. Number two, I think every attempt should be made to meet the parking requirement at some off-site facility, perhaps working with KU and the Oriad neighborhood. Number three, while I think valet parking is not ideal or practical, I believe it's something that we need to consider in this particular case. Because there's always that consideration, is this in perpetuity or how so? What happens if they sell the project? It goes to someone else? And then number four, most importantly, this is a good time to create permit parking in the neighborhood. And I believe that that money that Commissioner Soden has mentioned and the project has volunteered to contribute should be toward some parking resolution. So, yes, to permit parking. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comment? Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Melinda Henderson. I live in Brook Creek neighborhood and I think, this is probably my first time down here commenting on the Here project. I have jotted down some notes, listening to the comments tonight and plowing through all the documents. And first, I want to thank Scott McCullough for his help today in helping me find a couple of documents that were referenced that I couldn't find. And he was responsive immediately, so I just, I want to make note of that and thank you very much for that. And so, you all, except City Manager Marcus, and you'll probably get to know me now that I am, I'm a big believer in following our code and following our comprehensive plan. So I don't want to reiterate the "please" to please follow our code. One thing I do want to mention, when Mr. Finkeldie was speaking, he was talking about, this all started in July of 2014 and I don't believe any of you are sitting here in July of...
He's been here since that meeting Ted Boyle referenced earlier.
But then you got re-elected? I don't know. I cannot keep track of your terms. And I don't remember what the vote was then, but the majority of you were not here. And after probably a month, three more of you were sitting here to approve a final development plan. So when Mr. Finkeldie referenced you, I don't consider that you all had the knowledge that he was talking about. I certainly have no idea how everything happened and we got robotic parking approved if that wasn't following our code. But we've discovered it now. But we've discovered it now, and so now we have to figure out how to make the parking work. And I know last week, Mayor Amix was very clear that he wanted to get the numbers of, you know, what self-park would give us, and that wasn't a lot, around 250-ish. So the staff memo recommends approve the final development plan with the conditions set forth in the memo. What I see missing from that recommendation is the sentence to initiate a text amendment to the Land Development Code for valet parking. I've looked at the planning calendar. Could get that submitted by April 18th. Could be heard by the Planning Commission at their June 20th meeting and returned to the City Commission by July 5th. There is still time to do a text amendment and get it approved, if that's the direction you all choose to go. And I would highly recommend that you consider that tonight. However, if you choose to move forward with approval tonight and don't want to go ahead and initiate a text amendment, I want to ask you all to be very clear with your reasons why you're comfortable not doing that. I've sat through and watched a number of City Commission meetings where I haven't heard a lot of discussion about why somebody's voting the way they do. And I really do want to understand. If you don't want to initiate a text amendment and you're okay with that, please go on the record and explain why. I've heard a lot of rumors going around about this, and one of the phrases that I heard is one that I always take very personally, is that we don't want to be business unfriendly. I do not believe if we follow our code or discover that we have to amend our code, that that's being business unfriendly.
One minute left?
Okay. I think I can do that. So, and I hope you all read the correspondence from Debbie and Charlie Novogratik, because they made some very good points that, you know, 20 years is a long time to put up with this stuff. My last concern, and I kind of, I hate to bring this up, but it's been begging me since I, all this started coming back. We have a lawsuit filed against us right now by K-10 because, you know, a following comprehensive plan. And they think they did, and you think they didn't. I know that the code is different than the comprehensive plan, but I don't know that if we don't follow our code at this point in time, would that start a series of dominos falling? I have a big concern about that, and I don't know if staff could answer that tonight. I have faith in you all to do the right thing. Much more faith than I had in the City Commission that left this to you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Any other public comment on this item?
I would mention that there's an email from Janet Gessner that we can get into the record.
You have a copy of that? Okay. Was there any other... Any other public comment on this item? Okay. Thank you all. Back to the commission. Commission, have any other questions of anyone who spoke tonight, or of staff, or anyone?
Scott, what are your thoughts on the timeline that Ms. Henderson mentioned regarding a text amendment and being able to approve by July 5th, I believe it was? Does that seem reasonable?
I would stretch that out a little bit, just based on my experience with parking in the Oriad neighborhood and parking in general. We've actually had a text amendment in process for a couple of years now related to parking that has been before the Planning Commission several times. And so, in a very best case, for a pretty clean project, we have a seminal calendar that we use, and if it's in by a certain date, it gets scheduled to the Planning Commission. For something like this, we'd have to research a number of codes. We'd have to build some language, draft language. Typically, that would go to the Planning Commission, and something like this, it would be bounced back to staff for more direction and then back to the Planning Commission. I mean, in a perfect world, it could work that quickly, but it would be a challenge, I believe.
Scott, would it be safe to say that we don't have to rewrite the entire parking code, that we can just talk about that amendment to that that dealt with valet parking, a citywide valet parking kind of deal?
That's one option.
I think that that, you know, is something that, you know, that we can do, is something that would start. We can initiate that. You know, my whole goal in all this, and Jim, just so that you know and everybody involved, when I ask a question about how many parking spaces that you have, is all I want to do is be able to follow the code. Now, we're going to have questions on whether or not valet system versus the robotic system, are they one of the same and just the way that they wear out, and that's fine. But I want to make sure that your project remains code compliant throughout this process. My deal was, when I asked you and you presented me with 243 spaces, I was going to say, you know, we need to come to some kind of agreement on this. You're renting apartments. We realize that this is going to start in August and realize that you need help to make this happen. My recommendation is going to be that we give you 50% as, you know, the occupancy rate that you can be at. You've told me that, you know, that you're a little bit higher than that, and I can understand that. But, you know, we can look at those things, and I know that you're going to continue to rent, so we're going to look at it. Melinda, just so that you know, one of my recommendations to the commission was going to be to initiate valet systems so that he could have it in place, along with anybody else that wanted to use that system. But I think, as he, Jim, as you pointed out, there'd probably be very few that'll come up and ask to have this done in the future. So I think there are ways to get it done and keep you code compliant through this entire process. The idea of the permit parking, you know, obviously, we do have a couple of places in Oriad right now that we can point to where it seems like it works. You know, maybe it's something that, you know, that we can look at now as something that is reasonable. I mean, I don't know without having everything there. I know it's got to be tough, and we have to be terrible, you know, to try to find parking places as I go to events up and around the university, as we all do, and realize that it's a problem. But just so everybody knows, my whole motive, if you will, in all of this, is to make sure that we were made, your project were made code compliant as I saw it, and as I read it, make sure that you have ample parking to take care of what you've done to date. Allow you to proceed with the other parts of your plans for parking, and also to have us initiate a plan that deals specific with valet parking for the city of Lawrence, to be able to take care of the problems that may exist in your building, and then that way it's compliant throughout. So, anyway, that's my deal.
Is there more public comment?
Oh, anybody's fine. Go ahead, please.
Well, I'm concerned that if we were to add valet parking to our code, then that we do create a precedent where future developers would use it, and that is not something that I'm really interested in doing.
Okay. Well, Vice Mayor, we probably have a little bit of a difference of opinion there, because I think if we write something, that it ought to be for, you know, just so that it's not for the Here project itself. I hate to write code that deals with site-specific. I mean, it just doesn't seem right, but, you know, that's something that I would have to work through. But I think if you're going to write a change to our code, it better work throughout the community. Okay? So we need to be careful of that, in my opinion.
Yeah. Is it possible to accomplish that in an ordinance instead of adding it to a more generic code? Just make an ordinance for the Here project?
Well...
No, I think we have to be consistent for all projects.
You know, there's going to be probably some people that say that, you know, if we were to direct Scott to initiate a valet code change, I'm just guessing, it's probably going to look like it's designed for the Here project, correct?
It will be flexible.
Okay, I'm just going to guess then. It's probably not that flexible, right?
Well, again, we haven't done the full research to know what's out there.
Well, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, but, you know, it's got to be a code that I think's written for the entire community.
And I'd kind of disagree, I guess, a little bit with disliking valet. I think that, I don't know if anyone will ever use this beyond your group, but I think that long-term valet will present us some options in terms of accommodating density in a community, as we talk about, you know, all these ideas of new urbanism and stuff like that. How do we accommodate building density in downtown where there exists no parking? And I think as we look at opportunities for valet parking, we have the opportunity to put a whole lot of vehicles in a small space. And the alternative to doing that, if we reject valet parking completely, is we end up tearing down homes in the Oriad neighborhood to throw up garages. And so I want to be really careful that we don't come across as chasing off the notion of valet. Like I said, I don't know that anyone will ever use it again after this, particularly after your experience, but I think we ought to leave it open as an option. That being said, if we're leaving it as an open, as an option, we need to be consistent. We need to be predictable. We need a code for that option. And therefore, I think that there does need to be a text amendment initiation occurred tonight to where we are going to develop a valet code. The timeline of that, do we offer some flexibility for this project, knowing that there's an August 1st deadline? Perhaps, but we do need, we do need a code so that we can follow it for future projects that choose to make use of valet, that choose to give us that opportunity for density that works, instead of throwing up buildings in the middle of downtown that offer eight parking spots. That's not really where we need to head.
And Mayor, I might just offer on that discussion point that Commissioner Herbert just brought up about in the decision tree regarding, do you allow Here to move forward? And we have some more timing flexibility on a valet parking proposal anyway, then you could direct us to integrate that into the existing text amendment. Probably would be a little more extended time, but we could bring that back to you in the context of the entire code of parking. If it needs to be more immediate, then we would need a new initiated text amendment and move that forward rather quickly.
My direction would be is that it needs to be more immediate. We need to deal with this so that this applicant has a project that at least meets code throughout, you know, the way that we see it. That, I mean, we need to push for that. We can talk about parking all night long, but, you know, as we do. Yeah. I'm drowning to bring in my little parking meter now, so.
I got a couple things, three things, actually. I agree that we need a text amendment for valet parking. I think that just what Commissioner Herbert said was about wanting more density downtown, wherever we decide to build, that we need to make that an option, a very viable option. The second thing is with the Oriad neighborhood permit parking, I'm a strong supporter of that. I would like to see that run concurrently with the valet parking, something along to get it moved through the system quickly so that they can have that assurance. And then the other thing that I've struggled with since the beginning of this, since we've heard it, is, and the applicant brought it up tonight, and that is that we approved this back in 2014, and it was never in code to start with. And so they built their entire project based on that approval. And I really struggle with going back and saying, no, you have to redo the whole project to where you have to be code. I don't know if that's going to get us into a legal situation or not. Maybe Tony or Randy could speak to that, but I really believe that for us to go back and demand something totally different, I'm having a hard time with that.
Commissioner, I've had the same struggle, but mine is with making sure that we get this as code compliant as I think it should be.
No, I don't disagree with that.
And my whole deal in this is to make sure that they're able to proceed with their project, we're able to talk about the valet parking system, you know, over the next several months, have that in place, so that when they come and they apply or whatever has to happen, to be able to meet this valet section, that they've remained as close to code compliant as we can possibly make. That's all it is. And if we can do that, I think it works for everyone.
I can live with that.
I guess I'm coming in from a little bit different place. I'm thinking about the resource utilization of that building. If there are 510 parking places in that building, and we only allow under our code 250, it seems like our resource utilization is not recognized by the code very well at all. And so we probably do need to be able to amend our codes so that resources can be utilized We've heard from a couple of different attorneys tonight. We have a staff recommendation. I guess what I'd like to do is ask the city manager, do you have any guidance for us on this?
Well, I'm sitting here listening to the conversation about trying to make it code compliant with valet when it wasn't code compliant with a mechanical system either, using the same kind of logic, it seems to me. You didn't have an ordinance in place that permitted mechanical parking either. And so I think there's valet parking systems in place in this community currently, and we don't have an ordinance that addresses that. It seems to me that they've moved ahead with authorizations from this city. They've made investments. A third party who they had contracted with to build this mechanical parking system went bankrupt. I checked with champagne. I found out the sequence of events. I think they responded, you know, as timely as I think was appropriate. But to argue that we should have a valet ordinance before we would move forward with allowing them what I think to be a fairly logical, reasonable approach to move forward, unless we have a valet ordinance, I think that sets up another hurdle. Do I think that we should have a valet ordinance? Yes. But in the discussion we had about valet ordinance, are you going to address the issue of allowing smaller parking spaces in a deck? Are you going to address the issue of smaller aisle spaces in a deck that valet would use versus a self-park? My familiarity with valet parking is usually you're dealing with those issues on the street, and valets are parking those vehicles in spaces that already meet the code. Someone here, as I've been told, not the majority of the people sitting up there today, approved this. And so the developer had a reliance or a right to rely on that approval, moved forward with that decision. What I see is a fairly reasonable approach. I think that the neighborhood has concerns. I'm used to permit parking in previous places where I've been employed. I know it works. It's probably something that should have been deployed up in that neighborhood years ago. It sounds like they've been complaining about it for years, but to tie bar this situation at this moment to permit parking, I don't think that's a burden that should be placed on this particular project. The developer didn't deliberately create this situation, and the city partnered in the decision-making process that led to the dimensions that are used in this parking deck. To argue that we should, you know, that we should require valet parking, whether that's just the ordinance that... whether that's just the ordinance that addresses the street movement or if that also addresses the size of the structure that would be associated with valet, personally, I, 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 I think the, the approach here is reasonable that the developer is proposing. And, you know, I know I'm early in my career here, and this is not sitting well with a certain part of the population in this community. I get that. But I look at this and I say you have two choices. You can go down the path of trying to reach a reasonable settlement with this particular developer at this time. We all know what's driving the timing right now, don't we? Because everybody turns over in August, just like they did up in Iowa City. So this developer's pushing. So, the, the reality is, if that doesn't happen, there's some damage created. The reality is, the other course of action is to give them way less parking or, and therefore way less occupancy. Is there an argument that damage could be made in that situation? I believe there is. I'm not legal counsel, and I would suspect legal counsel's gonna be reluctant to comment on this because she doesn't wish to argue the other side of this issue. But I think when you ask about advice from me, I look at this as a relatively reasonable approach. I also think the neighbors have a very reasonable request, especially the permit parking. The valet parking issue is not just as simplistic as I think people are trying to make it out to be. In fact, what I think will happen is, you'll end up with a valet ordinance that addresses the street movement, and it'll move cars into an environment that, that probably meets code in terms of the dimension of the space and the dimension of the alleys if it goes into a deck. Or if it's on the, if it's on the street, you'll have provisions that can move the places into a street parking space. So, I, I think, I don't think you're gonna be able to get to the point where you can address the, the size of the structure in a valet ordinance. And therefore, this building was built with concurrence and approval of this city commission. And so, my take is, it's a question of reasonableness. And if you go down the pass, path where it is reasonable, then I think you grant approval. If you say it's not reasonable, I think you do risk it's an option for somebody to pursue litigation. And they're not gonna just pursue litigation for the fun of it. They're gonna pursue litigation because they feel that there is a damage association, associated with that issue. So, you know, I tend to be pretty direct, and in my opinion, I think they've offered a reasonable solution.
I have one thing that, maybe a little bit of vary there, and I think that you were getting ready to bring it up, was I, I can't forget, and I recommend to this commission that we don't forget, that we partnered with here and, and with the expectation that that robotic system would be there. That was one of the investments that, you know, the previous commission made, you know, based on, you know, the application and going through the public incentive review and everything about it, was because it was expensive to put that parking system in. So, I think that we've been, we've been talking parking here for a long time.
And, and just to, I had a thought come into my head while you were saying that. It seems that, in this particular situation, that you didn't have a code in place for robotic parking when we approved this. Okay? So, we approved something without the code. The question I asked Scott earlier in the week, did we grant a variance from our standards, which Scott indicates that we use both on surface lots and in decks of the dimension of the parking space and then aisles? So, to suggest that, that we need code compliance now, I argue you didn't have code compliance when you approved this to begin with. And maybe that was a flaw at the time. My, my kind of past practice or past experience would suggest that maybe this required a variance from the very beginning, and it wasn't granted, or it wasn't pursued that way. It was approved as a part of the development. And maybe Scott wants to chime in on that argument, but, you know, I think, I think it's good to have these conversations out and, and, and hear both sides of, of what at least I see in this situation. And I don't have the history that you folks do with this issue, but that's what I've seen in reviewing the documents and, and the transcripts so far.
Well, by virtue of presenting the preliminary development plan and final development plan to the governing body at the time, it received all of its approvals with either explicit or implied variances to the, to the parking system. So it was code compliant in that it received its approvals from the governing body for its use. And, and we were all kinda using creative juices at the time to, to think, oh, it's kind of an exciting project. It, a lot of discussion about it being a, a new technology to the community especially, but at the end of the discussion, it was an approved element of the project.
Something you said a little bit ago was, if it's approved by the governing body, then it's code compliant at that point?
Well, that's how we generally perceive it, that it received all of its approvals.
Okay.
Anyone else? Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a number of things that we really need to take into consideration here, as I, I gotta figure. The applicant has presented us a plan that maintains, was it 510 spaces in the garage? So the question, so the question comes in now. We've had the discussion about the code and what is, you know, the code and where it should be. Is the commission, and, and this is where we need discussion, are we comfortable with the five, with, with the plan as presented with the 510 valet spaces that exist? And we would be allowing, as, as I understand, as presented, that valet system to work without a code? Is that right? Without a written code of the city?
Did we ever get an answer to the que, I know, I know we can't, they can't disclose what this additional parking option is, but did we know how many spots that would be?
Jim, can you come up?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I guess you have to.
It will be at a minimum 69 spaces, which meets, which finalizes our total, total count that's required. And it is intended to be done without a parking structure.
Could I comment on that as well?
Please.
I spoke to a university representative about this because I had implored the developer to come forward and, and reveal where that was, what that was. I think there's still a negotiation going on, but the university reached out to me on that issue and said that, that that's moving forward, and they had every confidence that that, that would be taken care of as well. But I suspect that it may result in, in a further review by this commission before it's actually finalized.
That's something I would wanna expedite, rather than adding valet code. I'd rather have planning working on that.
Well, and he, Jim had mentioned that the additional parking will be done by August 1st. So I, you know, I do think that it's something we can keep in the back of our, our, our mind here as we're making a decision tonight, is that ultimately by move-in day, we're gonna have an additional 69 spots.
Some reason I always think they needed more than that for the parking. You're asking for 510, and you only need 60 more, 69 more and beyond that, is that true?
Yeah, there's 108.
Oh, 108 on the street, that's right.
It's gonna depend on the basis of commercial.
Right.
Approved.
Okay, we had said the 108 were for commercial count only, correct?
Well, the, they need 88 to accommodate the commercial. 88 of the 108, yes.
Okay.
So it's fully accommodated.
Does that buys them what, 20 additional?
Right.
I don't know if comfortable is the word that I would use for this, but I feel like it's a, this is the next step forward that needs to happen.
I'm gonna go back to resource utilization. I mean, if we can get 510 cars in that building, that's what we oughta do.
Okay?
I'd rather have them out there than building parking structures or...
So again, I mean.
We have to be real careful how we say that though, 'cause there's a lot of things that you can do that don't pass code. And I, I don't think we should set the precedent that, well, it's, you know.
Given the fact that it's nearly built, you know, it's a little different than, to me. And, but I'm, I'm coming at it from a different place, okay?
Yeah, I, I've had a lot of projects where I sure wish I could've said we're pretty close to code, good enough.
Yeah, if this would've been raw ground, then would've been the time to reevaluate how that's done. But, you got a building.
I don't wanna tell Candy why she's got 250 cars more in her neighborhood than she could've had.
Okay, so the, the 510 valet parking places are okay without having the valet code in place?
I would say acceptable. How would you say, okay or comfortable?
Well, I mean, the word that our city manager used was reasonable.
Reasonable, that's a good word.
If, if it's being done in concurrence with the development of a code.
Okay.
I think the quarterly reports too will help us make sure that, how many are actually being used. Will help with enforcement.
Okay, and then the plan also maintains the 108 on-street metered spaces? And then revises the mix of commercial uses from restaurant use to a mix of restaurant, retail uses as in the, in the report. This is coming from the developer. Scott, you've included all of this as, as part of all of our stuff?
Yeah, we've reviewed that.
Okay. The $100,000 generated from the parking meter revenue, Vice Mayor, your recommendation was to put this pack back into the parking lot?
Right, and that might help fund any permit parking that we might wanna do as well.
I guess one comment I'd like to make on that is that if we're gonna put the park, the money in the parking fund, I think it makes perfect sense to put parking money in a parking fund. I'd like to make sure that our parking fund actually operates as an enterprise fund so it has revenues and expenditures that are associated with parking and not other unrelated items in that fund.
Okay, and then we have the recommendation from staff is approval of the final development plan with the conditions that have been set in the, set forth in the memo. They're listed, on, on our, or on our report, items one through five, if that's correct? And then authorization to the city manager to execute an agreement with here outlining additional ongoing performance requirements for the project, and then setting, again, setting the parking meter fee and the fine schedule for Mississippi Street, Indiana Street parking meters. Direct staff to submit and adopting ordinance for future considerations. Fourth one would be the initiation of the valet parking code that deals specifically with valet coding, go without doing the entire parking, parking code. Last week I brought up, or a couple weeks ago, I brought up the, up on that roof, the speaker as big as those doors and the TV system that I understand everybody loves to have, and calm that down? Okay?
Just, just for the record, that, that deck will close at 9:00 p.m.
Okay.
Wow.
Other conditions of this item?
Well, they already changed the flow of the intakes. I appreciate that.
Okay?
When, I know this probably isn't part of it, but I still don't wanna let loose with this Oriad permit parking. I really want to see that move forward, along with any sort of valet parking, anything to do with making sure that neighborhood has some right to parking there. I really want that to move forward soon.
Me too.
Mayor, can I just speak briefly to that?
That, we, we actually have a report for the commission on that that I think you need as a first step. It actually outlined a series of recommendations to address the permit, or to, to address parking in Oriad, and kind of a menu of recommendations. And I think maybe the first step would be to present that report to you and have you at least get familiar with it. It, it came out of a day and a half worth of work from an EPA grant that we did several years ago, so it's a pretty healthy look at the, at the issues.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so present that, and we can consider initiation of that at a separate date?
Correct. It's gonna involve a lot of different stakeholders and organizations.
Good.
Are we expediting the valet code, or are we just gonna let it run a more natural course?
I think we oughta direct Scott, you know, I'm gonna take that as a separate deal. But, anyway, okay, the items then that we have before is.
Hey Mike, real quick math question here. So we're at 510 with valet, right?
I keep adding, yes.
We add 69 spots with the auxiliary parking, whatever that looks like. We buy ourselves 20 spots on-street due to the changing from restaurant to commercial and restaurant. So that's 510.
Come up with 624.
Plus 89. That puts me at 599. When do we complete this project?
I'm not studying any of the numbers that Jim's mentioning. There were about 36 shared and bonus spots in, in the calculation of original approval that has to be calculated in as well. So that may be where we're making up the.
Where are these spots at? These shared 30?
Yeah, there were, there were 35, I believe, 35 shared spots that, that he got credit for in the, in the overall total of parking that were shared between the mix of uses. And then there was one, I think, bonus spot that was part of the equation. So, when this was originally approved, the parking was calculated kind of as a pool of parking, and then there was, there's some relief given through the code for sharing a certain number of spots.
And that sharing is presumably part of that 108?
Well, that sharing is, is part of the, the total number of spaces. So that's always been calculated in the total number of spaces.
Correct, 'cause I left here with the understanding that we were counting the 108 exclusively for commercial.
Commercial.
Then I understand we did the little math trick to, to make 20 of those shift. But, but I, I don't get.
Jim?
Yeah, can you get me to 624?
Oh, that's one of those attachments.
That's not gonna help me.
That's the parking analysis.
To be clear, we're, we're. We're providing 618 spaces, which, per the original underlying approval. We're not changing any of the uses or, or anything that we'd got in the underlying approval. If, quite frankly, if you would like us to build more than 67, we can deliver probably an extra 20 spaces on that additional lot. So we would provide, we will provide 87 if you like. We might even have more than that. What we don't know is until we do our engineering, how many we will have, so we gave you the very minimum. But we're not trying to avoid anything that wasn't previously agreed to. This, this is the exact parking count that we always had. But, we can build more spaces on the offsite parking.
So again, add up, add up where you get to 624.
I just think we gotta get to 624 without magical shared spots.
Scott, I think you need to show us 624 spaces somewhere.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, this will, this will get all of the.
Number of spaces to fully occupy the building that they need.
Yeah, 'cause it has to for the NRA.
It, it has to. For the, it has to for the code and for the NRA, yes. There was, there were 685 spaces required. That's the, there was, there were 577 spaces in the robotic garage.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm, honestly, with that question, I'm fighting for you.
I appreciate it. We're, we're replacing.
You need to make sure you get to 624, 'cause if you don't, you haven't met completion of NRA.
We have the 510 plus the 108.
But those 108 don't count toward.
But they're, they're part of our overall approved parking count. They, they were part of the 685.
Okay.
Right.
So, and then the additional 67 that we're building gets us to 685, which was the original, the original approved count.
Okay, so we never actually get to 624 specific to occupancy? Okay, so we never actually get to 624 specific to occupancy without that 108?
Without the 108, right. The 108's incorporated, is included.
Because we're 685.
Yeah, the overall 685 is commercial and guests and employees and residents.
Next use.
Yeah, they have that in their spreadsheet here, 624 for Indiana Parking.
Okay.
I wanted to add one thing. This also includes that they are not going to get an occupancy permit for a certain number of units. Is that correct?
31.
31 units? Perfect. So that's included.
But based on everything that you've seen, do we believe that there's 510 valet parking spaces in that building? At seven and a half feet apart?
Are we going to count them?
Am I going to count them?
We'll count them, yeah.
What percentage of seven and a half feet? Is it 20% for seven and a half feet?
I don't have the exact number. I believe it was 22% or seven and a half feet.
Thank you.
Okay, so does anybody have any other questions on the final development plan?
Enforcing the parking meters, it says in here that we're going to draft an ordinance for future consideration. Do I need to say now that I want to see those fairly heavily enforced? Or should I wait to when we actually work on the ordinance?
The ordinance is, just sets the fine schedule for the enforcement. I think if you have direction on operational direction, it may be time to talk to us about that.
Yeah.
I know Terry said in her memo that we would be doing it up to two times a day.
Yeah, I'd like to do it more often than that if we can.
I think, and Mayor, if I may, I mean, in discussions with Terry Pierce, who's here, by the way, if you have questions specific, specifically for her, is that we're going to have to get into the operations for a few months to understand them and monitor them and determine what level of resources we have and what impact that is to downtown and what the fine revenue is coming in as well, to see what we have as resources for funding, any improvements if they're necessary. Our assumptions are that it can, a couple of times a day going up to enforce at this location can be absorbed in the day-to-day operations today.
With the great efficient department that Terry runs and how often I see these folks come around and hit my car.
And what I spent.
You know there's a solution to that.
Probably is, yeah. They do a great job. This is going to be a super operation on the meters.
I do appreciate that Terry had indicated in her memo that they could absorb it and not immediately ask for staff on that. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, that's part of why I was glad to see that we're getting some of the fees back, because I think we're going to be spending a little more. And I do want us to look at perhaps credit card meters, you know, things like that as a pilot project that I talked about last time. Because while school is in session, I think it needs to be heavily enforced, you know, but there's a lot of time that school is not in session as well. So I'm not saying, you know, Sunday through Saturday, 9:00 to 6:00 p.m. it needs to...
Yes, we are delivering the metering system here, and it will be a credit card system.
Excellent, that's good. So that might help with our costs as well.
I'd be in compliance more with the credit card system, that's for sure.
I'm looking forward to seeing it work.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Okay, again, the...
You raised a question, and I got to thinking about... Matt raised the question about the actual number and asking Scott to verify. I'd suggest that maybe you add language, subject to actual verification, to the actual amount, you know, before that final occupancy is permitted in there, that we would actually observe how that works. And it seems to me that the objective here is to get those cars in that deck and that we should have some responsibility to observe it and be able to verify that before that final number. We're going to give them up to that max if they can make it, but if we see some operational problem or issue that doesn't get them to that number, we should be able to reduce that number, so verifiable by the staff.
So that'll be another condition to be added? So again, the items for the conditions that have been placed on, does anybody have any question, comments about 1 through 5, any other things to add? I assume the sixth item would be the comments that was brought up by the city manager.
I think we've made lemonade out of lemons.
Probably. Well, okay, the first item then. And folks, understand, if you question my vote on this, it has solely to do with, you know, the parking and the code. I want you to all know that. I appreciate the hard work that you've done in trying to correct, you know, a problem, but I understand I have concern about it, but we'll get there. Okay. So I would entertain a motion then, I guess, for approval of the final development plan with the conditions listed in the staff report and the additional items that had been brought forward. Was this to include the initiation also of the valet system? And to... that's got to go on the front burner. Correct?
What?
We can't add the Oriad parking permit thing, is that not...
Well, what's going to happen is he's going to bring the report to us, and we're going to have that as a separate item over the next week or so. Okay, or next few weeks, Scott? We can add that to the future agenda item, just so everybody knows that it's coming, okay? We have all the conditions in. Everybody happy?
Reasonably.
Then it must be a good deal. So I'd entertain a motion of that final development plan with the conditions as outlined.
So moved.
Second.
A motion made in second for approval of the final development plan with the conditions was made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Vice Mayor Soden. No questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Passes 4 to 1, Mayor Erickson, dissension. Next item is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with here, Kansas LLC outlining the additional ongoing performance requirements for the project. Explanations? Tom?
Is this the quarterly reports and all that?
What all's in this?
You want to jump on that?
Mayor, this is the agreement that essentially abens...
That implements several of the discussion, of the provisions. It requires that the valet parking system be operated 24 hours a day, 7 days a week to satisfy that component of the project. It provides for valet parking system escrow fund to address the concern that if one vendor goes away, they don't timely get a vendor back in line, online, that we will have some escrow funds to use and some liquidated damages to compel compliance with that. We acknowledge that the valet parking system complies with the NRA, substituting the robotic for the valet system. It acknowledges that even with valet parking here is unable to provide sufficient warehousing or self-parking spaces to sustain full occupancy, that they're only allowed residential occupancy for the number of automobiles that can be warehoused. It identifies and defines what substantial completion in parking is to mean that 100% of the parking be provided to commence the NRA. It solidifies and reiterates that no access from 11th Street. It discusses parking on Mississippi and Indiana Street going toward the commercial component of the project and speaks to the donation that we've talked a little bit about. And acknowledges that in addition to providing sufficient parking, there's no entitlement to receive any incentives under the NRA Act until such time as it complies with all terms and conditions of this memorandum of understanding, essentially reflecting all the provisions you tasked us with a few weeks ago.
Scott?
That will include the audit that the city manager was talking about?
Okay. Any other questions on this? Thanks, Scott. Any comments on this item?
I have just one comment, and that has to do with number three. Scott, could you roll that down for me, please? And number three is the one that is, to the extent that there would be an acknowledgement that the valet parking system complies substantially with the NRA and the NRA requirement that there be automated robotic parking system. And I do have an objection to that, because what you're saying is that a valet system that requires human beings to park cars is equivalent to the automated robotic system that obviously didn't need to leave space for human beings. And those things are really not the same thing, and I would urge you not to say that they are. The reason we need to have, of course, a code is to provide the appropriate space for the human beings. And although the robotic system may not have fit our code, it was approved. We can't change that. But once they could no longer deliver a robotic system, we can change whether or not they comply with the code, because that's a new problem. We have human beings parking cars rather than automated systems. Perhaps someday in the future, we'll have drones parking cars. But until then, I think we need to be clear that this is not a robotic system. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments on the agreement with here, the performance requirements?
I didn't like the word "complies" either, and I think you guys were going to think of perhaps other verbs that might work better.
Okay.
Do you remember that conversation?
Are we, do we need to spit it out, a replacement word now, or...
Just approve the... Could approve the performance requirements in the agreement with here, exclude that item and tell staff to bring it back and amend it? Is that a possibility? Scott?
I think they're all talking to each other.
Attorney wants to address the intent of this provision.
Right, the paragraph three, I don't think, is intended to state that it is, that the valet parking is in compliance with the code. What we're trying to state here is that it satisfies the NRA Act and complies with the plan that was approved under the NRA Act. We've looked carefully at the requirements of the NRA Act. We carefully examined what was in the plan. And yes, robotic parking was referenced in the introductory section of the plan, but that was an introduction. It was not one of the critical components that's necessary in a plan under the NRA Act. So this paragraph is only to acknowledge that the replacement of the robotic system, of this valet system, is, in our opinion, compliant with the NRA Act. And if you want to use a different word than "complies", you know, we can look at that. I don't want to suggest any words right now, because it's a little bit late.
Well, one of the things that we can do there is we could defer this one agreement for a week until staff brought it back. It could even be a consent item at that point, I suppose. Do I have any problem with that? The next item on the agenda then is consider setting the parking meter fees and fines schedule for Mississippi Street and Indiana Street parking meters. Direct staff to draft an ordinance for the future consideration. That's pretty well laid out on what it's going to cost per hour and what those fines are going to be. Who gets the money, when and where? Right?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments on that?
Commissioner Marcy Francisco, 1101 live. I was out of line, I think, earlier when I talked about permit parking, and this seems to be an appropriate time to be out of line again. I just wanted to acknowledge, because you're talking about parking and fines, that I felt it was a very, very important thing to bring up. I think it is part of the mix of how we might control this if we think about permit parking. I do not expect it to be initiated as any part of this agreement. I hope to go on record in the paper if they report this that I acknowledge that there are other people in my neighborhood who may disagree or have other interests. So I appreciate the comment that Scott made. And also, I think we have an opportunity in our next review of the overlay plan to at least identify that as an issue for the Planning Commission and the Historic Resources Commission. So appreciate your interest, but actually hope that you don't do anything about permit parking tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, other questions or comments on this item? Okay.
Mayor, can we go back to the second item? I think we're... if we defer that, I mean, then obviously the third point, we've got issue with a word that's in there. But there's a lot of that language that holds them to a contract that I'm really uncomfortable past giving them a final development approval without language that hands them to substantial completion, substantial parking measures. Basically, what we just did was we gave them final approval and then said, "But we're going to defer any language that actually ties you down." And that's a really bad idea.
And I think, you know, it's consider authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. We can, they can deal with that, right?
The agreement will be in place if we approve it tonight, and it'll require them to adhere to everything that's there. If we have, how do we handle the question of the valet parking complies? What is the, what is the language there?
We can use a different word than "complies". We can say it satisfies the Neighborhood Revitalization Act performance agreement. We can say that it is a reasonable substitution for...
I like that one.
Reasonable substitution.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't think of it up there, but once I sat down.
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to...
I'm just going to bring them all back to work.
Sorry, I just, just kind of like floated right over that.
Well, I'm getting to the parking meter funds and the cost-sharing agreement that's coming up, okay? So we're okay with the parking meter revenues and the fee, the fine schedule? Okay. So let's talk a minute then about this revised cost-sharing agreement.
Do we need a motion for C separately?
We're going to get to those in a minute, hold on. So this here, after we've gone through all of the work, we find out it's going to cost us a little bit more on our participation, correct?
Chuck, would you want to show us information about this item?
The revised cost-sharing agreement basically includes the adjacent parking sidewalks on basically Indiana and Mississippi. And the contractor were having a pretty difficult time trying to bid on the city project, which was the street, and then having to... time trying to bid on the city project, which was the street, and then having to butt into or work with potentially another contractor who might get the project on the private side or on the here side, the angle parking, and they're supposed to connect. So we've got with the development group, and we've decided, let's bid it all as one project. We hope to see better bids, but the original bid did come in, our share was 258,000. So it was a little bit more than we had estimated way back when we started the project. But the here group has, again, they have submitted at least their share of the first part of the contract, where we cost shared on Mississippi and on 11th Street. So we've already received those funds, and we're just waiting for the bids for the additional work. And when it all comes in as one package, then we'll reconcile it, and this agreement will allow us to go ahead and proceed and basically commence the here development to providing their share of the money before we actually bring it back to the commission to award.
Did we, did we attempt to renegotiate that part so that we would remain at the 214,000?
That's in the agreement specifically. We won't be over that amount. Because we've already, we've already had a bid. It can go last, but it can't go more.
Okay. Okay, any questions to Chuck? Thanks, Chuck. Any comment on that item? Okay, thank you all. Okay, item number B. Let's go back and consider authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement with here LLC outlining the additional performance requirements for the project. The language is proposed by the city attorney. Tony, again, what was that?
A reasonable substitution. Or some, something along those lines.
That's fine with me.
You all happy with that? Okay. Okay. Any other questions on any part of this agreement? Commissioner, you bring up a very good point. We've gotta have an agreement to make sure that we hold everybody to the fire, so.
I didn't mean to jump on you like that. I was just really afraid we were about to make it.
Part of the deal. Now we get back.
Add to the pile of.
We'd sooner or later get there. Okay, so. I tell you what, I have trouble with, you know, the valet part just because we don't have a code, but I do believe that we need to have an agreement in place that holds, holds everybody in place. I want everybody to know that personally, I may have an objection to the valet parking system and whether or not it complies with the NRA and all the stuff that goes along with it, but Commissioner, but I appreciate you bringing it back up that we need this in place, so I will be supporting this item. So I would entertain a motion then to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with here Kansas LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for the authorization made by Commissioner Herbert, second by Commissioner Larson. Questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes five zero. Next item then is the action that we need to take is to set the parking meter fee and fine schedule for Mississippi Street and Indiana Street, Indiana parking meters. Direct staff to draft the ordinance. I would entertain that motion if there's no other questions or comments.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to direct staff to prepare the ordinances for parking meter fees and fine schedules on Mississippi and Indiana Streets for the parking meters, made by Vice Mayor Sodin, second by Commissioner Bowley. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes five zero. Next item is consider approving the revised cost sharing agreement with the city, or agreement with here LLC. Any other questions on that? Again, let's go back. The maximum amount we can pay is 214. Is that what you said, Chuck? Plus the 44.
Right.
Okay. Okay. And, and again, how much additional is that that we're having to come up with?
The original estimates were the city share was gonna be approximately 150, or that's what we had budgeted.
Right.
And then through the design and then through the bidding, the actual cost for our share, which is only the travel lanes on Mississippi, and we share 50/50 on 11th Street. And that was really an issue after, after we had decided we were going to do Mississippi, we kind of started taking a look at the condition of 11th Street, and here agreed to participate with us to rebuild that, so that was a 50/50. So our budgeted amount was 150, and we'll be able to cover this through the infrastructure sales tax.
Okay, again, we were in at 150, and now we're going to 250?
That's what the bids came in at. Our, our agreement with here was basically 50/50 on 11th Street and 50% of the travel, the cost of the travel lanes on Mississippi.
Right.
When the bids came in, our 50% was 214, plus the other 44 for the sewer line work.
And our costs went up that high just because one contractor may run into another one?
Well, and there was the additional, I mean, we were trying to get the sewer line work in over spring break. You have some other information?
Yeah, I just want to point out that was what the cost was gonna be originally for us under the original bidding. So we capped it at 258 so that if the bids come in higher, we are exactly where we would have had to pay under the original cost sharing agreement. So we're not paying any more than what we had anticipated previously.
Because as I read this, it looked like we were paying like another $108,000, and I thought.
Under the original cost sharing agreement, that was our share.
Right.
And under the revised cost sharing agreement, then we're capped at that level. So if the bids come in higher, we don't have to pay anymore. If it comes lower, then, then we get a better deal.
So we're not going a dime higher than where we were in original?
And we might be less, depending on how the bids come in.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. An extra $108,000. I just thought I'd bring that up in conversation. Okay. Okay, everybody understands it. Everybody's okay with that. Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the revised cost sharing agreement.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval is made by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you all very much for your time this evening on this item. We're gonna take about a 10-minute break right now.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
I had a milkshake last time.
You don't get sustenance sauce.
Did you want a piece? Okay, thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of mayoral terms. So...Tony, is this item, would this be yours?
Well, actually, I'd say it was the commission that wanted this placed on the agenda, and I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Actually, it was probably me.
But I hadn't planned to make a formal presentation, but I can.
Well, just so that everybody knows, last week I had talked to Tom and Diane about placing this item on the agenda, is that we needed to have the discussion. Normally, in the old days of tradition, next Tuesday night, we would have selected, we would select a new mayor. And obviously, with the change in the election laws that deal with the timing of when we run for office, going from the first Tuesday of April to now, what is the first Tuesday of November for the general election, it changes the way the governing bodies in the state have to set up the procedures.
We should put the memo.
As to when fall. Tony did put together a memo that told us any number of things that we have to do, and the directions that we have to give to staff to prepare, as I understand it, Tony, the necessary ordinances, or necessary ordinance that would outline everything that we have coming up next year, from filing deadline to, the filing deadlines being June 1st, and the odd number year, and then we would now file with the county election office, the county clerk rather than the city clerk, has been done forever. Do I understand it right, and I want to make sure that this is right from your memo, that it provides a governing body with the opportunity to hold partisan elections after passing ordinance? Folks, I wholeheartedly recommend we don't do that.
Yeah, that's a terrible idea.
That's not right. But anyway, that's just me. But again, the item that, you know, that talked about, you know, we can give the direction to staff to prepare all those items and do it, but, you know, the term is mayor, the term is mayor, obviously, is something that the commission selects its leadership, and then that's kind of where we are in this thing. We know that a new commission will be seated, okay, this is where I get a little fuzzy, the second or third week of January, second Monday?
It's the second Monday.
Okay, the second Monday of January.
Twenty.
In the even years, okay, following the, follow along, guys, it'll be fun. It's, we'll have our election in the odd year, and then there'll be, you know, a time from November to the second Monday of January, where we'll have a new commission seated at that time. At that time, you know, that would be normally when the commission would select its leadership at that time, including the mayor and vice mayor. But that kind of lays everything out. Tony, if I've forgotten anything, please.
No, you did a fantastic job. That covers it.
Yeah, read your memo. After the proclamation tonight, this was easy, so, but, no. So, you know, the biggest part about this is, and I know that because we are being asked to do something that really hasn't been done in the past, and that is, we've gone through a year where, wow, I've been on the commission a while, and I don't ever remember going through this, but, you know, having a mayor, not having a mayor, putting a new mayor in, you know, I was fortunate to receive the position from my colleagues here, and we've done, I think, I think we've done a lot of good things together. But, you know, the truth of the matter is, we're being asked to set something up that, you know, we're receiving as, from the direction of the state. Now...
Can I interject for a minute?
No, not yet. I'm here to tell you, the toughest part about this job is, is we all have, we all have pretty strong feelings about one another, you know, and we don't make one another mad in all of this, so that's one of the, or upset anybody in all of this, so, you know, that's one of the things. But, interject, sorry.
I just wanted to send our thanks via Senator Francisco to Topeka for providing us with this opportunity to rejigger our electoral ordinances. So, thank you, Senator Francisco, and your colleagues.
Okay. So, as we go through this tonight, one of the things that I would like to have the commission really, really think about is, you know, I may, I may have some direction on this, too, as I think would be a good idea, is I've thought about this throughout the day, I was trying to come up with a plan that would kind of take it a little bit out of the political arena, but, you know, at the same time, too, it's always going to be that, and I just want to lay it out for you a little bit in advance of taking public comment and questions and things. But every once in a while, you know, not to say that, you know, shirking any responsibility at all, but we have two people that are on the commission that would probably be very good mayors, but, you know, at the same time, I think would have the opportunity to serve us well. And one of the things that I did visit with before our meeting tonight, because I, and I apologize, I thought it up a little bit late in the day, but the opportunity of putting together a subcommittee of the commission by the two members of our commission, that, Commissioner Larson, Commissioner Herbert, that would make a recommendation back to the commission on the terms of, on the terms of mayor, as we go forward, realizing that we've got, you know, the date in January, if that's ultimately the day that we're going to select. There's a number of people that have contacted me over the weekend with a lot of great plans, and about the way that they think that it ought to happen, and I think that's, that's very good ideas, but this gives us an opportunity for, you know, these two folks to hear all of these and make recommendation back as to maybe when my term ends, and, you know, Vice Mayor Sodan's term as mayor would begin, and, and that, I don't know, just a thought.
There's lots of plans.
Yeah. But, but, you know, the thing is, is that would give them the opportunity, and just so that you know, and I wish I would have thought of this earlier, but, you know, just the opportunity to have them sort through everything, and maybe, maybe put together, you know, one that really works for the future, not, not of us, but of the commission, but of the commission, and, and, you know, the governing body of the city. So, that's just one idea, okay?
So, essentially, what you're saying is, you'd like to have them study and make recommendation for the new tradition for the commission?
Whatever that new tradition may look like.
Or just the next?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily designing a new tradition, it's just...
Well, we are setting a new tradition, though.
Sure.
Because we're going to establish the dates on which these things happen.
Yeah. Okay.
And I mean, you know, I've heard folks that have come forward with ideas of, you know, retaining April to April, good idea, you know, you know, going, you know, starting in January every year, but we still got to get to the point where, where are we at going from here to January of 18?
Just here to January 2018, is what they're going to discuss.
Right, right, right. Okay? I mean, that's just the idea. Like I say, both of them, I think, would be very good mayors, but, I mean, in all, in all truth, probably not going to happen, guys.
Well, it's two-person subcommittees, so they, would they be able to talk to the other three?
Because of the way that our quorum is, is, to talk to the other three, no mayor. They can't at this, at this day, is when they come back.
I think the idea of it is that, since Commissioner Larson and myself are not, by tradition, candidates to be mayor at any point in our term, we don't have a dog in the fight. And so, it's, it's an impartial look at how we're going to plan term, and turnover, and change.
And, and, here again, you know, I don't have...
What sort of timeframe are you thinking on this?
Three or four weeks?
What are you doing tonight?
Yes, I'd say we could wrap this up.
I mean, at most, I mean...
So, the previous mayor's term would have expired when?
Next Tuesday at 5:45.
Okay. So, when we selected Mayor Amix in August, does that give us one year from August for that term, or does his term expire?
I believe that, I believe, and I could be wrong, I'm filling the unexpired term of the former mayor.
Okay. So, do we have to decide next week?
I don't know.
No, you don't have to decide next week. With this transition period that the state law has put us in, you know, there is some flexibility. Our codes will have to be updated anyway. Currently, our code says that the commission will select its mayor and vice mayor annually, but those, all of those provisions will have to be reviewed and modified to comply with the state law, so you have great flexibility.
That goes back to my original question. Since we selected Mayor Amix in August, is that annual good until, I mean, for legal purposes?
You could, you could, you could take that approach, if you wanted to. You have, you have, what I'm trying to communicate is, you have maximum flexibility.
Okay.
To make any decisions between now and January 2018.
And I think next week is off the table, just because this city manager and myself will not be present at next week's meeting.
Do it in 19.
So, if you're assigning me as half the subcommittee, it would probably be important that I be here.
I think you'd do it without you.
Yes.
All right. I mean, like I say, I bring it up now, is it's just an idea. I had the opportunity, like I said, to visit with so many people over the weekend about, you know, ideas and plans that they have, and I think both of these two commissioners represent, obviously, great numbers of people. Time to time, they have conflicts in the way that on specific issues, and I think that, you know, we put them kind of in a room and say, you got to hammer this thing out, I mean...
Thanks, Mike.
Well, you describe it like that.
I mean, it's just, it's an idea. So, anyway, any other questions? Public comment?
Mayor and city commissioners, Marcy Francisco, and I've actually come down to talk about this topic. So, I really appreciate bringing it up, and the chance to be here. I do want to say, it's clearly the choice of the commission as to who they choose as mayor, and I put this in before your comments this evening, and now, thanks to the meddling by the state legislature and local government, we've added some choices for you in scheduling the terms to fit in with that new election cycle. So, I thought this might be a good time for me to share a little bit of my history and experience from now more than 30 years ago, about the process. So, I served as mayor from 1981 to 83. When I was elected in 1979, I got a call from the city manager, asking if I was aware of the tradition that had been used for selection of mayor. That tradition was to have the members who are elected to four-year terms, serve one of those years as mayor, with the highest vote getter serving the third year of their term, and the second highest vote getter serving in the fourth year of their term. And there's some pretty good reasons why this worked well beyond a shared understanding of what was to be expected. Each commissioner who was serving four years had something to look forward to, and also the opportunity to witness two other people in how they did their job. Instead of, well, that's how it's done, you could think. I really thought one of them did a good job of running meetings, or another was really good at getting comments from all the other commissioners, you know, when we made a decision. So, you would think about how you could best serve in that role. There were some downsides. When a new set of three commissioners was elected, there was a chance that you would miss your opportunity to serve in that capacity. And that happened in 1983, when Nancy Chaunce was passed over, and one of the newly-elected commissioners was elected as mayor the first year of their term. There's a lot to learn, being a commissioner and being mayor, and it, I'm not sure it makes a lot of sense to try to do that in your first year, and then what happens is, you spend the next three years looking back instead of looking forward. And we've been electing commissioners who were elected to a four-year term ever since, but we haven't ever gotten back to that old tradition. I hope that you, as a commission or the subcommittee, seriously consider the opportunity you do have to establish a new tradition that might make even more sense. If you keep the April to April terms for mayor, you could keep the pattern we have now of electing someone to not only oversee the budget process, but also to see its implementation in the first few months. If the highest vote getter in election started their term in April of their second year, they would likely have some experience with serving with two different mayors. It wouldn't be a full two years with two different mayors, it would be probably one year, or less than a year as one and part of another. But if the commission, commissioners were to elect both the highest and the second highest vote getters partway through their second and third years of their terms, and they chose to run again for commission, they would not be serving as mayor when the campaign got underway. Perhaps a little more sensible than having someone in the position of mayor also be campaigning for office. So, I want to thank each of you for stepping up and taking the challenge of a nine-month longer term than you'd been expecting, and I think we have a really good commission in place, and I'm hoping that some of the complex situations we find ourselves in settle down. April to April elections may also make sense, because even as you, each of you, serve this longer term, you would not be lengthening the terms of an individual in their term as mayor. We would still be looking at when your terms as mayor. So, here's the probably least probable part, and who knows, the legislature might come to its senses and realize that we should let local government be in charge of their own government, and we could get back to April and April terms. So, stand for any questions, but really appreciate this opportunity to share that with you.
About the senses.
Yes.
Good line. Okay, so by going April to April, just so that I understand again, and, one, if we decide to go to this subcommittee format, you would provide all of that information?
I would be happy to do that, and talk with people about that. It would mean, if someone's elected in November, that they knew that they would be starting in January under the current mayor. I think another good thing about that is, there's enough discussion, or was enough discussion, when you got elected one Tuesday, about who's going to be the mayor the next Tuesday. I would hate to drag that on for all of November, December, and the first part of January. It seems like it might be good to say, you're elected, you're going to be a commissioner, you're going to start in, you're going to have a chance to work with these people, and April is the time that we seat a new mayor. You might all have also some ideas, though, about, you know, how this fits into the overall schedule. You know, the one thing I was thinking about was the budget, when that process starts, but, again, it's totally your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
Frank Jansen in 33 New Hampshire. I just have a question, I'm not really understanding what's going on. If we were required to have election in November, how can you serve April to April? I don't get that.
You would have, Frank, you would just, that's when the term as mayor, as suggested by the senator, would begin. It would just, it's just different from January to April.
So, you'd still have election in November, but then serve from April to April?
No, 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 no. Your term begins the second Monday of January. The, what the senator's suggesting is that the term of mayor begins in April.
Oh, the term of mayor, not the commissioners?
So, you'd be seated, you just wouldn't be seated right there.
Okay. And she also mentioned the problem of having election in November, but not being seated until January, is that a...
Yeah, I think, you know, if there was something that we could send to the senator to take back to Topeka, this idea of having lame duck, you know, I think our current system has, has worked very well for the citizens of our community. You know, you, you have election on Tuesday, the next Tuesday, you either are commissioner or you're not, and that way, the public's pretty much in charge of who their representatives are. But this one here, this lame duck, this is...
So, the current rules are...
I don't think it's good business, but...
So, we're going to have a city commission election in November, with a primary in August, all that?
Yeah, all that fun stuff.
And not being seated until January?
You got it.
And then Marcy could take information back to the legislature to try to give us local rule, like they have local rule?
We've given her the authority to get it changed back.
I just would add that take back with you, Marcy, just to tell everybody up there to get out of our business.
Just remind them that they like limited government, and so they should stop specifically going against limited government.
Other public comment? Anyone else? Okay, back to the commission.
Well, one thing that is important to me is that the year before those four-year people come up, they are not serving as mayor or vice mayor, as she mentioned.
During their year of reelection.
Yeah, when they're campaigning. That's terrible.
That, that's a very good point from both of you. I, that doesn't work. You know, you're in control of an agenda, and that's not a good time.
Particularly if you find yourself in a situation where you would be not reelected, serving from April, and then suddenly, your April to April would become April to January.
You're out.
Yeah. I mean, look at our House, they're up to their two-years terms, and they're constantly running for reelection.
Okay. So...
So, are they gonna, is the subcommittee gonna address all seven of these things, or just the mayor business?
I think we address number seven, just with a collective no.
Yeah, that would be a collective no.
No partisan, yeah. No partisan, yeah.
I think number six is just, I mean, that's just a, that's just an operational rule. I mean, that doesn't really matter. We file in one place versus another.
The state's already taken care of that.
Right.
I think that what we could do is to direct staff to prepare the ordinances with, you know, or start working on preparing the ordinances with everything but the term as mayor. If we wanted to do the subcommittee group as looking at what would be reasonable to go from this point to 2018, January of 2018, then they would just work on that portion. It would come here for final approval.
So, they have a couple of weeks or...
Three or four, whatever it takes. Because they're gonna, Matt's gonna be out of town.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna guess three weeks, whatever it takes to get that done.
Yeah, I want them to have a workable timeline.
We get it back on the agenda so that we can finish the direction to Tony and Randy to prepare those ordinances that would show what that term as mayor is. And she's already gonna probably have all the rest of it done. Right? Right? This seems, I mean, it seems fairly simple to me, the things that we have to deal with, but...
One thing that I'm trying to find in here and I'm not sure I do is what happens with Commissioner, Vice Mayor Soden, and my terms? Is that in, is that in your memo, Tony? I'm sorry.
That's number five, isn't it?
No, no, that's just for the commissioners who were elected to the two-year terms?
Presumably, whatever decision we come back with as a starting point for Vice Mayor Soden would also be your starting point?
Well, I'm talking about the actual terms in office of the commissioners.
Correct. Vice Mayor Soden and Commissioner Bowley's terms were set to expire in 2019. Under the law, the commission can alter those terms by an ordinance or it can take no action. And in the case where it takes no action, those, your terms are then automatically extended to the second Monday in January of 2020.
Yeah. I just want to say that I am not comfortable voting to extend my term in office. I think that's not where I want to be. I just...
I think the state legislator already...
Yeah, I think they took care of that.
Already did that for you.
I don't think they did.
Well...
I think it's silent and I think that it's, the ordinance has to deal with that, is my understanding.
But we only have elections on odd years in November and so...
I understand that, but I honestly do not want to vote to extend my term in office. Maybe somebody else can do it, but I don't plan on voting for that.
We gotta like vote you off the island here?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just like, you know...
We might have a lot of power, at least. You just want to come back with a... We thought about it, we've decided that Lisa and I would like to co-mayor for the next four years.
There you have it.
We appreciate your support.
I think we gotta get you to finish your term.
Well, I mean, my term, I was elected for a term of four years. That would be April, right? The statute is silent on extending the terms for the people who were elected for four-year terms last year.
You're correct. The statute only specifically addresses the terms that were supposed to expire in 2017.
And so...
But the law provides that if you take no action, it would just serve to extend those to the next election period.
That's fine.
And there is case law that supports that.
But I mean, if you bring an ordinance back that says Stewart's term's gonna be extended for nine months, I'm not gonna vote for it. That's just all I'm saying.
Better hope you got three then.
Well, I mean, I can play it either way, Matthew. I can play it either way, man.
So, in theory, what we could do is we could pass an ordinance that would extend the terms of future elected commissioners to that.
That wouldn't be me.
Future after...
Well, no, that wouldn't work.
Yeah. And, and again, the state law is silent on that, so... But I mean, if you bring something back about mayor terms and all like that, you put that in there, I can't vote for it.
But if it's not in there, then is it assumed that his term would automatically extend?
Yes. That's if...
You're not gonna let me off the hook?
If the commission takes no action, then that is how it will operate.
That's how it'll work.
Okay.
We won't take an action, so you're here. You understand?
Yeah, okay.
Election by default.
Just don't ask me to vote to extend my term. This is not right.
Your Tuesdays are taken up until 20 whatever.
2020.
Okay.
2020.
2020.
I can see it now.
Everything runs out. 2020. Okay. So, what do we think about a subcommittee? Or is there another way we want to do it?
Well, it's fine with me. I just want them to have a workable timeline.
Thanks.
Well, I'm not gonna put it on until they're ready. Is that fair?
Mayor, I'm honored. Thank you.
I'm glad you guys stepping up. I guess one of the things that I would suggest to you is, at least on my name, take it out of the equation. You know, don't, don't try to tie a name, you know, to things. And I know that's gonna be tough, so... But, you know, just dates on the calendar. Okay? Well, I would recommend if Tony says we can do this...
Can we talk, Manny?
Yes.
Okay. Is it public?
It, it could be public, but two of you can meet.
I just want to have all the rules on, you know, everybody understands.
I would suggest that any, any written information that is submitted to the two should be made public or should be shared with, with everyone.
So, if we get something that's just addressed to us, we should forward it to you so you can...
To Bobby?
Yeah. To Bobby, yeah, Bobby.
Well, I would suggest one thing, that we do suggest that anybody that has a plan or an idea such as Senator Francisco Buck Forward or anyone else who has, you know, a plan on how to deal with the terms of mayor from now until 2018, if they want to, you know, submit things, that'll be fine. And then, both Commissioner Larson and Mr. Herbert would act as committee that would carry that out and bring back to us their recommendation.
Very good.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion that we direct Commissioners Larson and Herbert to bring back to this commission a plan that would establish the terms of mayor or be considered as a plan for terms of mayor around this date till second week of January of 2018, second Monday.
January 8th.
Okay. And also to direct staff to start preparing the ordinances for the terms of office and the election requirements for the office of Lawrence City Commissioner. Okay? Entertain all of that in a motion.
I would move all of what you just said.
Hey, your second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Oh, it's the committee. There you go.
It's nice they can work well together.
Still didn't want to vote for himself, so...
Made by Commissioner Herbert, seconded by Commissioner Larson. All in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 5-0. We'll hear from you in about three or four weeks.
Sounds good.
Or whenever. All right, thank you all. Future agenda items. You ought to walk through those? Well, what do we have for next week? I see... Here's the water and sewer financing for 2016 CIP projects. Okay. I don't think you necessarily need me here for that. Brian will probably review that with you. Yeah, that'll be fun. And then, the 19th is a request from North Lawrence Improvement Association for a discussion, I think, on the RS5 zoned areas in North Lawrence.
Save your seat, Ted.
Be here, Ted.
And then, on the 26th is a text amendment regarding the City of Lawrence Land Development Code regarding urban agriculture. Okay. And then, there's a whole raft of items to be determined which we'll get to. Yeah, we're gonna make, eventually. Commission items. The city manager's report. Just a couple of things. The first is you received the 2015 Annual Progress Report, Integrated Municipal Wastewater Plan Memorandum of Understanding. I don't know how many of you have gotten through it all yet. But this is a plan that is the result of a publication out of the Environmental Protection Agency out of 2012. And it really goes to the requirements of the Clean Water Act. And so, in January of 2014, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment executed a 20-year memorandum of understanding providing for a number of things, but probably not limited to these. The adoption of an integrated plan, initial integrated municipal wastewater planning document, incorporation of the integrated plan into the NPDS permit. That's the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit for the Lawrence-Kansas River Wastewater Treatment Plant and the Waukerusa River Plant, which I was visiting this past week and got a look at that. And the provision for integrated plan review and modification at each five-year permit and implementation schedule and best estimate of improvement projects and then, like this, annual city reports. It's a good report. It's very detailed. And I guess I'd like to say to the department led by Dave Wagner, this is kind of one of the things that kind of flies under the radar a lot. There's a lot of improvements going on in this department. And I think it's good to recognize Dave and all the employees that supply the work in this particular department, so... That's that comment. The other thing that was under the manager's report, we were now including testimony on our website under legislative priorities as well as repeating our legislative policy and where our focus is that apparently you adopt every year. And so, then you can see our testimony and the public can see what we're testifying to on different legislative issues as well. So, those are the two items. Questions? You know, going back to the utilities report, you know, one of the things that I was interested in under the eco-flow rapid rainwater reduction thing that we put in place several years ago, where we're smoking the lines and kind of, you know, changing the direction of water. I'd like to get a report, maybe Dave has it, about how much water that we've taken out of the system now, the clean water essentially, that we're not treating any longer. See how much diversion we're actually doing so far. Make sure that it's working.
Okay. I didn't see the amount of water.
Yeah, it's a, it's a program that really, I don't know if Dave is still here, he's probably gone. But, you know, it's, it's a lot of times referred to as I-N-I, inflow infiltration and getting that clear water out. And if you think about, you know, all the projects we're working on in terms of sustainability, that's less water that's going through a very intensive treatment process that doesn't need to be going through that treatment process, saving a lot of energy in the process. So, it's, it probably is a huge power savings associated with that as well. It's a very complex process with the smoke testing and disconnection of lines and lining existing lines. But it's really worthwhile. There, there probably is some calculation as to the payback on something like that as well. But it's, it's a good thing for us to be doing, so... You break up a good point about the cost of being able to clean that water, treat that water. And, and essentially, all it needs to be, you know, is have happen. It needs to get back to the river, the receiving stream that it's gonna be into because, tell you what, it's an awfully expensive gallon of water to treat.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Calendar.
Let me add that. The 11th, I think that's a Monday. Monday, April 11th. The Lawrence Arts Center is welcoming the new chairman of the National Endowment of the Arts, Jan Chu. And that's gonna be at 4:00 PM, I believe. 4:00 PM to 5:30, as I understand it, on Monday, the 11th.
Okay. Let's add that. Were you a participant in that? Were you to be a participant in that?
Yes, I will be there.
I bet you were leaving.
Doing what?
I bet you were leaving.
Leaving.
April 11th?
Yep. I leave on the 12th.
Oh, okay. Got it. I want to remind everybody, so let's add that to the calendar. Remind everybody tomorrow, 4:30 at the library? Lawrence Public Library. We have a reception from 4:30 to 6:30 for our city manager, so...
Oh, yeah, you should go to that.
I'd better be there, yeah. Yeah. I'd put that on my calendar. I'm trying to figure out. You know, last week you brought up, I had a lot of ribbon cuttings?
Yeah, you have a lot of them.
Well, did part of them leave?
We got one there, one there.
I guess I've done some. Thanks for last Thursday.
Oh, you better, anytime.
Okay. But, okay. Anything else we got? Okay. Well, if we got nothing else, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn and thank you all for your hard work this evening, staff, everyone.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn, made by Vice Mayor Soden, seconded by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.